All right, well, let's start. All right, calling this meeting to order at 7:30. I guess we need a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First up, we've got 7:30 PM, public hearing, accessory dwelling special permit at 562 First Parish Road. Go ahead and come up and tell us who you are and...
I'm the applicant, Chris McKenna. And you give me my address on my...
No, that's good enough, we know who you are now. So if you want, go ahead and describe what you're doing and what your plan is.
Yeah, I don't do this every day. My engineer's sick, so I'm just sort of filling in.
We pride ourselves in being very casual.
Oh, good.
You got a plan, I think?
That's for sure.
Uh, yes, I did. Okay, just go over what you're doing and what you're building and...
It's just a one-bedroom home. What I'm proposing is to build a main dwelling and to use the existing one-bedroom home as an accessory dwelling or in-law type dwelling. I meet all the zoning requirements, as far as I know, and this is a new little project, and we've done all the drainage work prior to making this application, so, you know, that's basically it.
It's just gonna stay the way it is?
Yeah, we're not proposing any changes at all to the existing home. It's one-bedroom, it's about 550 square feet. The new dwelling will meet all the percentage requirements to bring that into conformance as an accessory dwelling.
And is it your intent, you're gonna live in the new house?
In the main house, correct.
Yeah.
And then have that as an in-law unit.
Accessory dwelling, yeah.
Unit.
Existing building.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, Bill?
Oh, I thought you were being late.
Oh, you're early.
We just started, so...
My priority is going with my granddaughter.
Of course. Laura, you want to go ahead and fill in on this?
This accessory dwelling is on some property that was part of a common driveway that Chris McKenna was in to see the board about a couple of months ago, and what's, I think, a nice aspect of it is it's probably gonna help preserve the small building that's out at the front that looks, yeah, sort of historic. It's a, you know, small, old-fashioned little building, so this'll provide a use for it, that will provide some, you know, some purpose for it. There are a couple of aspects of the common driveway that needed a little bit of a look. One of them was that the common driveway was only gonna be 14 feet wide, which is allowed under the bylaw if you have the approval of the fire chief, so because there's another unit going on, we asked Chris if he would talk to the fire chief and get some kind of a memo or endorsement that this was okay for the additional unit, and he did that. The other thing that's part of this as a common driveway is the drainage, and because this is an accessory structure, that means there's gonna be a primary structure, and there's gonna be more impervious surface and some more pavement because there'll be another driveway and so on. So we did talk to Chris about getting some information to show that there would not be any impact on the drainage, and that's something we really should have the consulting engineer just take a quick look at, and I think Chris has agreed to do that. So basically, it seems like it's, you know, a pretty, pretty good application.
Now, so the, on this particular plan that we have, where the garage is for the new dwelling, it doesn't show a driveway, I don't think? Is it, they're proposed?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I just missed it.
It's hard to see.
Yeah. Okay, then never mind.
This is a very busy plan.
Yeah.
You gotta turn around.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's, is the common driveway, is it constructed now?
Yes.
It's gonna be the dead end.
It's fully constructed.
Turn around, think for the fire department.
All of the infrastructure underneath the common driveway is not paved.
Continue up here to the next home.
Next lot.
It actually can't be paved until all the construction is down on the site because it's a pervious product, and we don't want to compromise it until, you know, we have it as a crushed stone driveway now, but it will be paved in the future when the construction is complete.
So is the eventual intention, then, to develop or have someone else develop another residence behind this one? At the end of the common driveway, you know, at the end of the Hammerhead thing?
Yeah, there is, there was another lot back there that's been sold, so that doesn't, that's not part of this application at all.
But we can expect to see another application at some point?
Well, actually, they, it's a buildable lot, and I think they'll just apply for building permits. They're not gonna do what, it's an unusual circumstance where we had this little tiny house that is really fantastic accessory dwelling, so it sort of made all the sense in the world to go forward with this permit application. That lot is, will be developed by somebody else, it's gonna be a single-family house, as far as I know.
Does it have frontage somewhere else?
They have...
Or is it still access on that driveway?
Yeah, they have 50 feet on this, the common driveway.
So that would be the third house on the common driveway?
Right.
Correct, yep.
Which is the limit, right?
Is that a problem, of course?
No, it really doesn't because the common driveway says you can serve three lots, so it's, you know...
Well, it wouldn't be a problem for us, it'd be a problem for the applicant, anyway.
Yeah, yeah, right.
No, I don't have any additional questions.
So, this is next to the Gray's former property?
Yes.
Just west? Yeah?
This is actually their property.
Is it, was it part of the Gray's property originally?
Yes, I bought it from the Gray's.
Okay.
From the estate.
All right, there it is.
No, I don't have any questions.
Is there already a driveway to that?
I think there is one, it's far.
Right here.
Yeah. And then there's another home right here, but it's got its own driveway, I'm pretty sure. Yeah.
Questions from the other guy? The other guy's also, these guys also?
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
Is there anybody here to talk about?
Any comments to put to the public?
I do have one other question. I just realized we got a note about the septic plan. Is that, is everything fine as far as the new house and the accessory dwelling?
They're gonna need a new septic plan.
Correct. I can speak to that. I think it's, what it is, is we have a four-bedroom system designed currently. Doing the calculations and speaking with the engineers, no issue at all to go to a five-bedroom, but we wanted to get, instead of wasting money, get your approval on this first, and then we'll have to adhere to the Board of Health requirements if we go forward with that, so. But it's, my understanding, there's no issue increasing that to a five-bedroom system. Or you could reduce the main house to a three-bedroom house and keep that system, so one of those two things will hap, will happen, but most likely it'll be increased to a five-bedroom.
The Board of Health has to sign off before they can get the building permit.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
And this has the conditions you talked about?
Well, that's the findings of facts, and this is the approval in closing the hearing moments.
Okay. So this is the, okay, I make, I move to make the following findings a fact. Number one, the property at 562 First Parish Road is owned by Robert Barrett Trust, FPR Realty Trust. Number two, on November 7th, 2012, FPR Realty Trust applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling in an existing structure. The applicant proposes to build a new primary dwelling on the lot. Access to the proposed primary and accessory dwellings will be from a common driveway, approved by a special permit from the planning board on 7/28/2011. The floor, number three, the floor area of the accessory dwelling with one bedroom as shown on the plan is 550 square feet. This is less than the, than 750 square feet, and meets the area requirements of 530 dot two F for accessory dwellings. Number four, the site plan shows an existing two-car garage for the accessory dwelling. A new garage for two cars is proposed for the primary dwelling. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and ample parking for the primary dwelling. Number five, the property is located in the residential R1 zoning district. The height and setbacks for the accessory dwelling comply with the zoning bylaw. Number six, on 8/4/2011, the planning board approved a special permit for a 14-foot-wide common driveway for three houses at this location. The zoning bylaw requires approval of the fire chief for this reduced width. The applicant has obtained a memo from the fire chief indicating that this width is adequate for these houses and an accessory dwelling in a separate structure. Number seven, as part of the special permit approval, the planning board approved a drainage system with rain gardens and other low-impact techniques for this common driveway. The applicant has agreed to provide revised draining calculations to the planning board consulting engineer prior to applying for a building permit for the principal dwelling. Number eight, Christopher J. McKenna, as future owner, has signed a notarized statement that he shall occupy one of the dwellings on the premises, and if he sells the premises, then he shall submit a new document signed by the new owner. Number nine, the applicant meets the standards of Situate zoning bylaw, section 530, for accessory dwelling special permit.
Changes, modifications, corrections? Motion?
You move, so I second.
Yeah, so that was the...
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, another one?
So this is the, I move to close the public hearing and approve the accessory dwelling special permit for 562 First Parish Road with the following conditions. Number one, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plan entitled, "Accessory Dwelling Special Permit in the Town of Situate, Massachusetts, 562 First Parish Road by Ross Engineering Company Incorporated, dated September 21st, 2012, and Front Elevation, First Floor Plan and Second Floor Plan for the Proposed Primary Dwelling and Existing Floor Plan of the Accessory Dwelling Submitted With This Application." Number two, the applicant shall meet all the requirements of the Building Department, the Board of Health, the Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and other town agencies. Number three, the property at 562 First Parish Road shall contain a maximum of two dwelling units, a proposed primary dwelling and an accessory dwelling in an existing structure. The footprint, number of bedrooms, and/or square footage of the accessory dwelling shall not be increased without prior approval of the planning board. Number four, the owner of the property shall reside on the property as long as it contains an accessory dwelling unit. Each new owner of the property shall provide a notarized certification that he intends to reside on the property to the planning board prior to occupancy. Number five, new drainage calculation shall be provided to the planning board based on all improvements to Lot 1, 562 First Parish Road, with a deposit to cover the cost of review by the town's consulting engineer. Any modifications to the site or common driveway recommended by the consulting engineer must be approved by the planning board prior to the application for a building permit. Number six, no on-street parking shall be permitted. Number seven, this special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days of the date of filing with the town clerk. The owner shall provide proof of this recording to the planning board within 30 days of recording.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you know, I'm sorry, I didn't read the last, I didn't realize there was two more.
I'm amended.
Oops, do we have to amend? I'm sorry.
I just draw my vote.
I guess I should turn the page. Number eight, this special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9. And number nine, this special permit shall terminate if the use is not in accordance with its decision and its conditions.
Do we have the amended motion?
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No more pages?
No more pages, I'm sorry. Thanks.
Thank you.
If you could sign...
They got out of there rather efficiently.
Yeah. So we'd not have anything until 8:15?
So the next public hearing is at 8:15, so in the interim, we can catch up with mundane things like paying bills.
Yeah.
I think there's minutes to approve, right?
Did you guys, I had to get these, they might have short-stopped at my desk seat.
There are like 57 copies of today's...
I'm really glad you typed those things out, because if I had to read that, like, just off the cuff, I mean...
Not enough copies of the...
I didn't...
What did you do before?
See a paper airplane contest coming up here.
I don't know why I haven't been able to do this before.
I can't do it with a red pen. Thanks, I got one somewhere, I suppose. Take yours.
Yeah, it's important to do it the right way, it's required by the law, so you have it on the record, and, yeah. But it's, it's a lot of work, obviously, to read all that into the record and...
Well, I'm just saying, if you didn't have that in front of you, what was done before?
Do we have minutes?
So there's just the two? Karen, there's just the two?
Two minutes.
Three minutes, okay.
Two minutes, 120 seconds.
All right, I make a motion that we vote to approve the Situate Planning Board minutes from November 8th, 2012, as well as the Situate Planning Board minutes on November 20th, 2012. Both of these were submitted for our review prior.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I did not vote for the 20th, I voted for the earlier one. Not being here.
Oh, okay.
I didn't, as well.
Yeah, we missed you, that was your anniversary, wasn't it?
I went down and saw Mr. Mouse, Mr. Duck.
But it was your anniversary, wasn't it?
That was in October. We went down with the Green kids.
Okay, sorry.
Why didn't I see you there, then? Why didn't I see you there, then?
Did you see the people lead the parade? That's where I was.
There you were, I should have been watching for you.
It's my favorite place in the world not to be.
All right, I have a number of purchased, yeah, purchased requisitions here. So I move that we pay $140 to Armory Engineers for site inspection for 277 and 283 Chief Justice Highway, the common drive. The application, okay, the applicant deposited money in the guarantee account for this service?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Also, $480 to the services for Armory Engineers for review of the stormwater permit on Hathaway Also, $480 to Armory Engineers for producing the new WRPD map for the special town meeting fall 2012.
Which will probably wind up being fall 2013.
Yeah, that was the Water Resources Protection District, I should point that out. And also, $20 to, is this a refund?
Yeah.
Oh, so you have to approve the refund?
Yeah.
Okay, so I also move that we approve a refund from the planning board guarantee account for excess money deposited by the applicant but not needed for the review of the stormwater permit. So it came to $20 refund.
Who's that going to? What's it say?
Oh, we actually, oh, I'm sorry. JS Berry Construction Limited Liability Corporation.
Is that everything?
That's everything.
Did this one slip in here? I think this one's...
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss one? Boy, I'm really being bad tonight. And one more, $11.03 for planning board office supplies for pens.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Talk to your planning board budget?
Yeah, I was thinking about talking about the medical marijuana, medicinal marijuana I just want to let people know, the selectmen were very interested in the planning board moving something forward on this to April town meeting. We were supposed to get some information from town council, they didn't really give us a lot of information, they just gave us the bylaw from Wakefield, which just said, no, they don't want it anywhere. So I think the first thing that you all need to decide is if you want to just try to do a complete prohibition on it, or if you want to try to allow it somewhere. And the town council association hasn't really come to any kind of consensus about what the state's gonna allow you to do. I mean, they may, it may be that you can, you know, prohibit it completely, it may be that the state says, no, you have to have it somewhere. So that doesn't give you a lot of guidance, but over the next...
Didn't they read where they thought Wakefield was, their bylaw wouldn't stand?
Yeah, well, he was kind of on the fence about that, but usually, they don't let you completely exclude anything.
I think the difference in this case is that there's some argument that, since it violates federal law...
Right, that's what I would have said.
That would be the basis for excluding it completely, but if it's, if that doesn't hold up, it would probably be treated kind of like the laws on adult entertainment, which means you can exclude it, you can regulate it, you have to provide someplace for it to be, you can have reasonable restrictions, they do things like, you know, can't be so close to a school, or, you know, only in a certain defined area in a business district, but, but those laws say you have to have some kind of opportunity somewhere in the town for even the uses that are considered sort of like nuisance type of uses. Is this intended to address just the dispensing of it, not the growing of it?
Yeah, just the dispensing of it.
They can, I believe, well, the regulations haven't been done yet, but I believe they can do all of it in one facility. That's what can be grown in. Yeah, the law that was passed is very vague, but in other states like Colorado and places like that, they can do it all in one facility, they can grow it, they can dispense it, the whole...
Process it.
Yeah, they can process it, the whole thing, in one location, so I think you have to assume that it's a full... Yeah, soup to nuts, yeah.
Is there any value to trying, to try and assess the sense of the community as to whether or not this is something that's desirable or not?
Well, it'll go to town meeting.
Yeah.
I think part of it's, we're up against a pretty tight deadline, right, to get something, to get space reserved on the warrant by, what, the 18th or something?
Can you do like a non...
Yeah, that's kind of like thinking, you know, trying, whether, investing a lot of time and effort, let's, let's make sure that what we're gonna do is more likely to be successful before we get there.
I think the issue is the timing of it, because technically, this could start January 1st, and so our only chance to address it is now, we'd have to get it on the...
That's, that's true.
We have until the 18th to put something on the warrant for April, otherwise, we miss it, and there always would be fall, would be fall town meeting, so... Yeah.
I think when you have a public hearing, too, there'll be publicity before that, where it is kind of a cutting-edge type issue, you know, people may be getting calls from the press or whatever.
Yeah.
I'm sure there'll be some kind of an article about it, and you may get, you know, interested people coming to your meeting, I mean, there may be people that have different ailments that this is, you know, gonna be the cure for them that come in, and then there may be parents and all kinds of people, so...
And Laura, for reserving a spot on the warrant, you basically, you have the general parameters of what it is, but then, per the schedule, there's a chance to finalize language
Oh, yeah.
in the spring.
Yeah.
But I think you have to have sort of a semi-concrete proposal of what it's gonna look like, but then there's a chance to refine it, but I think, I'm not sure if you could say, you know, we're gonna put on the warrant that we're gonna ban it in Situate, and then through that process, change it to something significantly different than that? Regulate it, yeah. I think you have to stay within the general parameters of what you put, reserve on the warrant now.
Can we go with alternative proposals? One being to ban and one being to, to regulate it, and then sort of see which way the wind blows?
Well, at some point, you have to make a recommendation to town meeting.
No, I understand, but at least for this time, while we're trying to preserve whatever rights and remedies we may have, let's...
Advertise two different ones?
Yeah, you can have two articles, basically. I mean, I think that...
I suppose there isn't any reason why you couldn't do that.
But you, once it's on, though, can you not withdraw it, though?
Yeah, we could withdraw it anytime.
Yeah. I mean, that would be, I guess if it's sponsored, if we put it on, it's sponsored by the planning board, and we decided later, we could withdraw one of the two proposals.
We worked up a schedule, which, you know, we did send around for the different timeframes that are involved with town meeting, and this is all very kind of structured, because the advisory committee has to look at these things, the selectmen have to look at them, there's a warrant that has to be published, I mean, there are all sorts of deadlines involved with this process. And what we came up with is that January 10th, which is two meetings away, we would really try to finalize the wording by that point, wording or wordings, if there's more than one article. But, you know, if you have a workshop on this, and you just invite interested people, you know, maybe, well, whatever, you put something out in the paper, you invite some interested people, you try to do that at, you know, either that January meeting or the December 20th meeting, you know, you should have a sense of which way to go. We can prepare some alternate drafts and ideas beforehand, but I think you won't really know until you get the public input on it. But we're trying to really finalize it by that meeting in January, because January 17th is when we would need to send a legal ad to the Mariner, and that kind of sets out, well, this is what you're proposing to do. And I think that if you, if you do publish a legal ad, I think it's just gonna have like a funny message if you, if you publish two articles. So, so I'm thinking maybe if we could put a workshop on, do we have, do we have time? A workshop on like the 20th?
We have the EDC coming in from 7:30 to 8:30, and then we just have medicinal marijuana and the rest of the zoning articles after.
Okay, well, then...
We do have, we do have time, we don't have any other applications filed at the moment yet.
Yeah, but it's not gonna...
So to step back, though, always, let's just assume, step one, we do nothing, right? If we do absolutely nothing, then anyone can open, like, if...
That's, well, that was my question, what is the result of doing nothing at this time?
Yeah. I don't think they know for sure yet, because the regulations have to be adopted, and I think that process traditionally could take quite a while to go through, so I'm not sure that January 1st necessarily means, somebody could open something up, but in theory, they could, so it's...
I guess my...
Well, it has to be in a business district, right? Yeah, it'd have to be in a business district, and then the regulations, I suppose, could come after that, and then that could change how they run their business, but I guess
what I'm saying, maybe the question that we're, we're asking the wrong question, it's not whether we ban it or not, it's the fact of, we say, we are, the planning board is sponsoring this to zone this properly if, and if we don't, basically, you know, someone could put it in a business district, but we're protecting the town whether we decide to go with one or not, with the, like you said, 20 feet from a school, or, you know, certain restrictions that are involved.
It just seems like a rather enormous question to be deciding upon sponsoring or not sponsoring, or, you know, putting particular language to it on this, on this timeline.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, to me, it's very significant, and we should have the Board of Selectmen weighing in, we should have public safety weighing in, we should have the school committee weighing in, there's so many people that... There's so many people that have an interest and a legitimate interest in this that I just, I feel like we're trying to compress it. Maybe it's necessary for legal reasons, but it just feels like it's way too quick to reach any kind of conclusion at all.
Well, I think the question is really, if we don't do anything, then there's a risk that something adverse could happen. If we do something, even if it's not completely worked out, we could always amend it later.
Well, I mean, my temptation, if I had to do that, would be to ban it.
That's my thing.
Until further thinking, you know, until-
Ban it for a period of two years or three years.
Or until somebody overturns our ruling.
Right. And do it for, ban it for a finite period of time to give you time to come back up and properly-
Decide whether you want to allow it with certain regulations.
Precisely.
I would bind to that logic, and because I think that, you know, if that were legally challenged, that's going to take them some time to get through that, you know, to overturn bans. And that would give us time to think about if it, one is overturned, or if we just want to go a different direction. We'd have until probably fall Town Meeting, maybe that's the timeframe to do the hearings and figure out what we want to do.
Yeah, in my mind, that's-
The short term.
Any value to entailing this, a moratorium for the time being, until we find out what the rules are going to be?
I mean, that's something you would have to adopt, if it's something-
So the idea, we'll have a moratorium and we won't issue any approvals for these kinds of facilities until we figure out what's going to be done in terms of state regulations and, you know, after federal law enforcement weighs in on this and decides what they're going to do.
We could either go that way to put a timeline on the ban, or we could just put a ban on and then, you know, Town Meeting can amend that at any time.
Take it off when we're ready to.
Pick it off when we want to.
Or when we were forced.
Yeah.
We should find out pretty soon what the AG's, what the Attorney General's office is going to do with the ban that Wakefield passed, if they're going to accept it, if they're going to kick it back and say, no, you can't do that. So, and actually, it probably wouldn't be a big deal to just call them and say, you know, what's the take on what Wakefield dug? You know, are you going to accept that, what are you going to do? Because we want to know.
I guess the answer that I'd like to know is whether if we put it on the warrant now for a ban, and then between now and when we have our hearings in January, the AG's office come back and says, you know, you can't do that, can we then modify our warrant article, or are we past that at that point? That it's too much of a change from what we reserved now? That's what I don't know the answer to.
Well, that, I think, kind of logically, kind of, we were going to do that, remember with the wireless towers back in like ninety-eight? You have some ancient history with situat. There were two articles coming forward. One of them was a moratorium, and the other one was an article to, you know, try to manage the situation. So we could definitely do something like that. You know, I mean, I think the hard part is you have to continue to think about how to manage the situation.
But I think-
In the meantime, but, you know, unless they have a decision right now that, yes, it's okay to do a moratorium.
I guess what I'm saying is if we only put one thing on the warrant.
Yeah.
Right now, we only put, we're going to ban it. And then if the AG's office comes out between now and when we have our public hearings in January and says, you can't do that, do we lose our spot on the warrant, or can we?
Oh, no.
Because there is some standard about, you can't, you know, substantially change what you reserved on the warrant.
It would have to be two articles.
Well, yeah, they want it to be within the four corners of the article. But up until January tenth, you know, the January tenth meeting, you could do whatever you want, because, you know, the ad doesn't have to go in until the seventeenth. So as long as on the tenth-
Change anything up to the tenth.
How much detail do we need on our, if we regulate it? How much detail do we need now to reserve the spot?
Oh, I think they'll, they're very interested in seeing the town take some control on this. And so I think they'd be, they'd be very comfortable, even though there's no language worked out. I think they'd give it, you know, space.
And by they, you're referring to the AG?
The selectmen, I'm sorry.
The selectmen, okay.
So, I mean, what would that look like now, though? It would just say, you know, an article-
Please reserve space, because we're working on an article-
And that's all we have to do?
To address the zoning conditions or moratorium.
So maybe we do that, we put two articles on, just to protect ourselves? One for banning and one for regulating?
Well, send them, when we, just send them a letter indicating that, pretty much what our discussion is, that there's two possibilities. One is to come back up and to see if we can, if we have enough information to properly regulate it, right? Or lacking that, and then look to ban it for a finite period of time until we could come back up and get the regulations in place.
Okay, okay, great.
And then the, obviously, what we do is we pick one, we go with one, and if that's voted, then we look to IP the other one.
Okay. And what do you think about maybe sending out some kind of a memo, you know, from some bill, just to the police, the school committee, I mean, some of the agencies that we're talking about?
Definitely feedback.
We're looking at this, we, you know, we'd like your feedback, we'd like your input, please.
We need, not like, we need.
We need.
Yeah, I think you needed, it's kind of the first thing.
From what I've read from other towns, both the police and then also the traffic committees are very interested in this as well, about locations and things. But police departments in particular, because there can be a fair amount of out-of-town traffic. I understand things like that, and depending on where it's located, and, you know, they have to look into that. There'd be arguments for locating it certain places in town, you know, proximity to police station, or if, you know, less busy intersections, or things like that.
Is there a licensing procedure, Laura, with this kind of a facility?
Not yet. They haven't adopted the regulations yet, so that's, they're in process.
I mean, so how are we supposed to do anything under those circumstances?
Is there any sense as to how popular these are going to be? I mean, do they spring up on every corner, or is it kind of like-
There's only thirty-five across the entire state that are approved.
Yeah, and there's only so many in each county, I think, right?
Five in each county.
Yeah. And what I'm asking, so, you know, are we getting exercised over something that may very well never happen?
We probably are a little bit, because I read an article about it, and they said the most likely locations are going to be more populous areas. So they're saying like on the South Shore, it'll probably be Quincy, Brockton, maybe Plymouth, places like that, where they're going to generate more business just by population, so.
Unless they ban it.
Yeah, unless they ban it.
But again, we don't want to be surprised.
No, I understand.
Okay, so the people that I'm, I'm, I got on the list right now to ask, you know, to tell them we need their input would be police, traffic, the schools, the Board of Health.
Recreation.
Recreation.
You, you brought it up, in seriousness, EDC, you think it-
Economic Development Commission, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, it has implications, so.
What about, what about any local healthcare providers, perhaps? You know, that might be helpful to get, you know, someone that understands from the medical business perspective on how this works.
Yep, there's like Harbor Medical.
Yeah.
Norwell VNA?
I mean, places like CVS, I don't know if they have like a local, I mean, that would be sort of more the economic development angle, I think. Some of the planners think that CVS is going to be all over this and, you know, be setting up their little in-store-
It'll be like Camark.
Oh, with the photo and with the pot?
So, okay. Okay, that's a good assortment.
And there are, there's the two nursing homes in the Green Bush area.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, too, the nursing homes.
I, it was just an idea, I don't know.
The other question is, one workshop ought to be enough.
Is one, well, we'll see. I mean, I think-
That was scheduled for when?
December twentieth at eight thirty.
Do we think five days before Christmas, people are going to hesitate to devote an evening to something that is not holiday-related?
Well, I think if we send something out now, or we ask for all these people's input, you know, at least if there's someone-
I think it's going to be kind of a lightning rod of an issue a little bit.
Oh, there's no question about that. It's just an unfortunate time.
Yeah, the timing is tough.
It'd be nice to be able to wait till after the holidays.
I'm curious to see all the local ministers who come in. It's like, you know, right out of, you know, trouble right here in River City.
Well, I mean, I think it's the right approach to do what we're doing. And then if we don't have enough information, we'll try, maybe move towards putting a bit temporary ban on it until we can hold more public hearings and really get our arms around what regulations make sense and-
Well, and is that something, I mean, in the paper, I don't know how you're going to advertise this, or maybe, has it already been done?
Oh, no, no, because, you know, we wouldn't plan on holding a workshop or anything without, you know, talking to almost-
Okay, so I'm saying, as part of the description, it could be something like, this is a preliminary discussion, like, make it be informal. I don't know how the wording, I guess I was trying to say, is try to lessen it a little bit, because if someone says-
It's got to be a public hearing.
Okay, all right.
It's either a hearing or not, so.
I think it's, yeah.
Well, of course it is, but, you know, it's all about marketing.
Well, I think it is what it is. I mean, if it'll be, it'll say, you know, we're having a hearing to decide whether to ban, put a moratorium on it, or whether to regulate it and how to.
Distributors sitting near the trains.
Do you have a contact in Wakefield to see if they thought about putting a finite moratorium on it? Was it three years, five years, or just, they did it forever, I think?
No, it just, it was started by the health, the health agent, I think, the health agent of the Board of Health there.
And there are two or three other towns that have it as well now. I know Boston's looking into it as well. I mean, there's a lot of committees going on this around the state right now.
Well, Quincy passed, not a moratorium, but they did pass regulations, I think, within certain zoning districts.
They did?
Yeah.
So we can gather some more information, but I know there's a lot of people looking into it right now.
Yeah, yeah, the Town Council's supposed to come back with some more information.
And you'd assume especially someplace like Boston would really be looking into it. Because obviously, that's going to be a prime location that people are going to want to locate in, so they're probably spending a lot of time, other states have done, and-
It occurs to me that the people that pushed the ballot measure might be available to come down and talk to us as well. And they may have some additional information, since they probably involved with this a long time.
I would think so.
It'd be really interesting if we can figure out who they were.
Yeah.
Yeah, if anyone has any ideas about who those people are, let me know.
Bet your town clerk can figure that out or tell us who that is.
Or our legislature, Jim Cantwell would know. I'd be interested to hear his take on it.
Yeah, yes, Tim, we'll include him.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So we're either in business or out of business.
We want to talk about those other zoning articles real quick? Get those out of the way, because we talked about them before, right?
Yeah.
They were through most of our business.
Yeah, I think you saw the Village Business Overly District before.
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah, the, the basic idea on that was whether to modify the language so that the frontage could be altered by the Planning Board. And I did get a little bit of email feedback on that, that we should think a little more carefully about that. One thing you can do, which is perfectly okay to do, is to let the proponent, you know, the person whose property it's going to affect, let him be the proponent of it, get the signature, is realize what's involved with it. You know, I don't know how the board, you know, what the board's thinking on that.
I think I'd rather have control over, over that than have it brought in. Because that way, there, just from an appearance standpoint, it looks like it's tailored for that person rather than the more generic application of the bylaw.
I guess the only question I had about it when I looked at it is whether we should make that a supermajority versus a majority, which would match-
That might be a good idea, since it's a vote.
Yeah, it'd be more in line with, you know, like a special permit or something. That would be my preference.
Yeah, I would have no problem at all with that.
But I think, you know, in the Village District, there's going to be situations where, we've already seen the one, where we're going to want a little bit of flexibility.
Yep.
And it's going to make sense, and we want to promote, you know, more business in the area.
Right, right.
If the plan makes sense, and we have a supermajority looking at it on the Planning Board, I think it's good to have that flexibility.
Engineering report if it's necessary, and, you know, whatever else. But, yeah, the idea is to densify that activity as much as we can and still make it, make it work and-
Yeah. And they're more willing to participate when it's a majority, super as opposed to a regular majority.
Yeah, and I think, what else we talked about that-
Flexible open space.
Provide access for vehicular traffic expected to be generated on the site. Another thing is, we should add something about parking as well. I mean, I know they have to meet the parking standards, but I think that's, that's really the two reasons, right? For the frontage, you're talking about, well, density, but also potentially, you know, loss of kind of on-street parking that you might rely on. But I just like parking added into that as well, that they look at the traffic generated and, you know, effect on parking, or sufficient onsite parking. What you don't want to happen is have, you know, really condensed frontage for all these businesses, and then lose all your on-street parking, and then have, you know, a logjam onsite, so.
So what would the, the Planning Board may require review by a traffic engineer? Wait, maybe, may require review by a traffic engineer for parking and other determinations, or?
Let's see.
Wouldn't that be part of the review?
Yeah, I think it'd be. Traffic engineer is similar qualified professional prior to making the determination.
Yeah, as long as it-
Spell out for circulation and parking, for circulation access and parking. I mean, so that the parking is really spelled out.
I just want the word parking in there somewhere. I'd be happy with that, just so we know to look at that.
And the other one is the flexible open space?
And safety.
Traffic safety, is that it? If that, does that do it for that one?
Yep.
On the flexible open space, it was really more like a housekeeping change, because I think the Planning Board has been waiving that lot for years with that, but it really wasn't spelled out that you could. So this just adds that in there, so it's clear that you can do it.
And going back to the water resource question? That, when are they going to, they're going to bring that in the fall, you think?
I talked to Al this week, and, yeah, it sounds like we talked about how tight it is for the spring, and he said the fall is mine.
And what about being a general bylaw rather than this one?
I think he's okay with that. I don't know why he wouldn't be, so. Yeah, I mean, a DEP is definitely okay with it.
Yeah. It still doesn't solve the problem, I think, that exists.
No, it doesn't, but it, you know, puts the problem out of our, you know, little world.
The problem still exists, the good news is it isn't ours.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need, we want to send a letter to the selectmen indicating that we want these two as articles?
Yes, sir.
And to save the space for the medical marijuana.
And indicate that we're looking at two for that. So that would be, you're looking for four.
Yeah, we also have for you another little treat. The stormwater bylaw looks like we really are going to have to make some minor changes in it, and that has to go to Town Meeting. The reason being, some of those issues that came up a couple of meetings ago, where the language that we had was, was not clear enough as far as development versus, you know, new development versus land disturbance, and-
Cutting down the trees?
Yeah, cutting down trees. The property that was back off of Maple Street. So we have, and again, this is not something that has to be decided tonight, but I think, you know, maybe we can talk about, you know, the exact language doesn't have to be decided tonight, but maybe we can talk about it with the memo to the selectmen. This is just, you could look through this in two minutes, because there's really very little change that's there. This is existing bylaw, and I have to-
Okay, so this is, it's marked?
Yeah, and it's only, the whole bylaw's only five pages anyhow. So this was something that Karen did some work on, which is, you know, a big help.
Yeah, I think that solves our issue that we ran into before and meets the intent of what it was supposed to be about.
Yeah, this was-
Like we talked about, it's just the language wasn't there.
So does that situation that we looked at a couple of weeks ago come under alter the drainage characteristics of a parcel of land?
I think it comes over land disturbance.
Disturbance, yeah.
Where we weren't really talking about, you know, clearcutting a five-acre piece of land. And since we ran into that situation and we couldn't control it, and someone made some good- And since we ran into that situation and we couldn't control it, and someone made some good legal arguments about why that shouldn't be subject to the bylaw, yeah, that's why we're doing this.
Okay, I think we got to move on, because we're, we've asked our A-15 test.
Maybe we can take this up at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, I think we should. I could, I, I think we can tighten this up a little bit, but go ahead.
It's A-15, the next item on the agenda is a continuation of public hearing for accessory dwelling special permit to thirty-three. Yep, continue.
My name is John Townsend of the Saint Council Group, and I'm going to ask someone else to come over and sit with me. I think, uh, the board's seen this now a few times. I can either, you know, go through the particulars, the square footages and, and parking and things of that nature, or we can get right into the design changes that have been completed and proposed to you, which I think is probably the better way to go if, if everyone agrees.
I suppose a problem with that.
Okay. So the, we distributed some packets that you all should have one of. The floor plan of the accessory dwelling remains the same. The floor plan of the connector area is turned ninety degrees and moved towards the rear of the house, so that the rear of the accessory dwelling and the rear of the existing building align. And the roof is hipped on the, on the left-hand side or the kitchen side of the accessory dwelling, and that common ridge line runs through to meet the ridge line of the existing building. Now, there's a couple options on roof design at the front of the structure. We had proposed that the roof over the connector area be set back slightly, and the reason for this is to avoid the existing chimney from landing in the valley area, and also to provide additional light to the existing kitchen area. However, we have also provided a perspective view that shows the, you know, the roof line extending straight across as the board had recommended. That's also doable. I think it's just, it's from a construction standpoint and a long-term maintenance standpoint, it's prefer, preferred that the valley not have a chimney integrated with it. The setbacks are shown on the site plan, so the rear, rear yard setback is now forty feet, which is the same as what was existing to the existing building. And the left-hand setback is improved to twenty point nine feet. The front yard setback to the accessory dwelling is thirty-six point two on the right-hand side. The proposed new parking remains the same. The proposed square footage of the accessory dwelling does as well.
Question to the board.
What's your proposal for the connector as far as, like, a walkway? Like, right on the perspectives, it doesn't really show anything, but I was wondering, is it going to be connected to both the primary dwelling as well as to the accessory dwelling driveway?
Yep, the, the new accessory dwelling driveway, it's assumed will be connected to the, um, to the connector area, to that front door. And the existing walkway to the front door of the existing dwelling will also connect to that, to that front door. A landscape feature, it doesn't, not necessarily asphalt, but.
Yeah, and then I think we mentioned having, like, that connector door be sort of a secondary door, meaning in, in style or design.
Mm-hmm.
So is that, are these, though, that are shown or proposed, sort of the actual doors, or was it just a standard block that you've inserted?
Uh, wait, yeah, we've, so we took, we had originally, I believe, a door there with some side lights and some glass built into it, and we've shown that as a six-panel, kind of more of a secondary door there.
And I, I can't remember, does the, the front door on the existing dwelling right now have, like, the little, um, half-window over it?
Which way over it?
Okay. It is also a six-panel door, okay. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it does?
Yes, that's it there.
Okay. Okay, great, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, my, when I first saw this, I, my initial questions were about the, the setback of the ridge line, but I understand the, the different sort of options or scenarios because of that. So just to, your clarification, you're worried about on the valley itself, if you had the, the roof line going over, which is, I guess, what I'll call it, option number two. The full dissection right here, the full
Yep.
roof line going over. You're just concerned about potentially ice in that valley, or just the construction of, like, where it meets right at the chimney?
Right, my, yeah, my biggest concern there was, was just basically the first major snow event that we get in the year is probably going to be there.
Snow is back up on the chimney?
Remained there in April, you know, so.
And just integrating the valley flashing with the chimney to roof flashing is going to be a, a real test.
Right. But there are, you know, we can heat tape it and.
You can do peel and stick, or you can, yeah, there's a lot of, yeah, you're right, you could heat tape it to get rid of the snow.
And, uh, actually, informally, I did talk to the design review committee about this, because we were talking about something completely different. And it's interesting, one of the comments that, that was made there was that the hip roof, they thought actually it would be better integrated with a gable on the sand, even though we did request, that was their comment that was a little bit contradictory. Now that both of them were together, they, they felt potentially the gable might be a better, um,
What?
unification, if you will. But in, in any case.
I think we sort of put it in there to sort of reduce the impact of the
Right.
accessory dwelling.
Yeah, make it look more subordinate.
Make it look subordinate, right.
So, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, you've basically done all the changes that we requested. I mean, I think the only questions from the, the board that we'll have is the particular roof lines, but I'm, I don't have any additional questions right now.
Yeah.
I, I like the hip roof, and I like the, the lower ridge line, I think, because also it makes it look a little bit more subordinate to the main house and reduces the massing and everything. So I think it does create an issue from a design perspective to have it, you know, with the chimney and the snow stacking out there, so. But I, I don't have anything else. I think you've done a good job of addressing the concerns, and we look at how far the design has come from when you first came into where it is now. It's, you know, significantly changed, and I appreciate your willingness to work with everybody, you know, to modify your design and address the issues that we raised. That's all I have.
Well?
Really not much. I mean, I think this is done as well as it can be done. I don't think the, the sort of mass and presence of the accessory, the new accessory dwelling is certainly overbearing. The original dwelling is small, and so it looks a little bit more equal than some of the other situations that have been brought to our attention. But I'm mindful that if I wanted to just put an addition on my small house, you know, I could build this. It would have the same visual impact on the neighborhood as it does in this guy's, or being called by, by the name of accessory dwelling, if you called it an addition and built the same thing. You wouldn't even need to be here. You'd just go get your building permit. I, I really, I, I can't find any fault with it significantly.
Sure.
Probably, without, without any sort of design credentials or not, I, I look at this and I see, I, I think it's technically very well done. And certainly we've shoehorned as, as big a structure in here as we can, as we can get to fit. I'm fully aware of the, of the controversy that this has caused in the, in the neighborhood, and I, I wish there were a way to fairly resolve this and have everybody be happy. But I think on balance, um, in light of the fact that the homeowner has asked, has done all that we've asked them to do, that they're going to get what they want. But at the same time, uh, you know, I, I wish there were a way that, at least I personally, could be more sensitive to the, uh, the unhappiness of the neighborhood. And I, and I hope that this doesn't cause enduring, enduring problems. And that's probably all that I have to say on the matter.
Well, I would echo those thoughts. I think you've come a long way from where, where we started. Hopefully you've had a chance to talk directly with the, the neighbors as well, but, you know, I can't really find any other, any other changes that I would make here, and I, I think you've done the best you can with this, trying to connect these two pieces together, so I don't have any other comments for you.
I will say, just in light of that, after the last meeting, which I think was November eighth, we had talked to a, a couple of the neighbors in the, in the parking lot, and the feedback was positive at that point at the direction it was going, so that was good to hear.
Well, there's, there's lots of public participation here and, and some unhappiness.
Well. I think you've come a long way in terms of what it is. It's more coordinated now in terms of what it was, rather than, than appearing to be two separate structures. I think there will always be the issue of, of, of density on the lot, I mean, when you, because you're, you're looking at, putting an addition, the equivalent of an addition that's virtually the same size as the, the original house. Here from the public, and we should figure out at some point what we want with the roof line. But, but from the public, I need, need your name and your, your address.
My name's Dan McKinnon. I'm attorney practicing here in Sichetown on Front Street and represent several of the neighbors. And I, I agree that, you know, if it was just an addition, they could put it on, but the problem here is that the bylaw doesn't say that you look at it and say which is the primary and which is the accessory. It says it should be clearly subordinate, and this is not. I mean, I'm sure you've got my letter. And that's the main thrust of my argument. It's not a situation where somebody wants to prevent her from being able to put on an accessory dwelling. It's just not, this is the right way to go about it.
How would, how would you make it worse subordinate?
Incorporate it into the actual house that's there. I guess the house itself would have to be expanded, rather than building a structure and attaching it to it. But I am an attorney, not a designer and architect or builder.
This is in effect, that's what they've done. The only difference is the, the building addition, right, if you just call it an addition, regardless of the fact that it has an accessory dwelling name also, if you look at it, that can be done as a matter of right.
It can be done as a matter of right, but you're coming in here seeking an accessory building, accessory permit, special permit.
It can be done as a matter of right and not as well as this.
Pardon me?
I said it can be done as a matter of right and not as well as this.
Uh, possibly. I mean, I'm not going to dispute that. But, you know, like I said, I, I'm not a designer, an architect, or a builder. It just seems to me that the ones that have gone on have gone up either through the, you know, raised the house and built it on that way.
Wouldn't an addition allow rental property? I'm sorry, Jane Briette, thirty-eight God Road, would, if it were an addition, would it be allowed to be, it would then be a two-family and need another permit to change it to, to a resident, to a, you know, rental, or is that?
Not suggesting what they could do, or, or highly apparent doing it.
No, I, I.
They, in effect, would come back, put an addition on it, right, and then come back and say designate part of that addition once it's built as an accessory dwelling.
But you would have the same argument. It would have to be clearly subordinate.
I would have, I would have your argument, saying that in effect, what I got is, is I'm taking an existing building and incorporating accessory dwelling.
I'd say the perfect situation is you don't even notice it, right? If it's built over a garage or something of that nature, or a separate floor in a house, but, you know.
Well, the ones you've shown us as examples that, that we've got in front of us are very similar to this. They certainly don't incorporate another floor on an existing house in the accessory dwelling.
But, but they're nowhere near the same size, same footprint as the one that's going on here.
Uh, I don't know that. We haven't seen floor plans.
If I wasn't sitting here looking at this and knowing what was going on, it would seem to me that I wouldn't be able to tell which was the primary or single family and which was the accessory.
Well, I would say the other examples probably benefit from having a larger main house, so therefore the same size accessory dwelling created, you know, doesn't have the same sort of equality. And that's true, but I don't think faulting this solution because the, the original house is smaller than some of the other houses in the neighborhood is, is, uh,
You're dealt.
It's really a very fair idea.
I mean, I think.
Dealt the cards you're dealt, correct? I mean, it's, uh, you know, and the bylaw is what it is. It says clearly subordinate, and, you know, if you have a house that you can't put an addition on, I don't think the neighbors would be as upset if this was scaled down to one bedroom and more in line with the five hundred square foot, like we proved earlier. And we were talking about the accessory dwelling here that's almost the exact same footprint as the home that's there.
I think the question is, I mean, under the bylaw, they're permitted to build the square footage, they're permitted to build, what is it, seven fifty, I believe? So, I mean, the other ones we've looked at, there usually is a much larger main house, so it's easier to take the seven fifty and, you know, make it disappear a little bit more. I think there's a, there's a policy question here. You know, we're stuck with the bylaw we have. That's what we have to rule on here. But there is the question, does this work for the neighborhood long-term, and, you know, that's something maybe the neighbors want to look into or take up as a cause, should, you know, the bylaw be modified somehow. You know, I think the bylaw, the way it is now, works really well for, you know, twenty thousand square foot lots, forty thousand square foot lots, things like that. When you get into, you know, Sand Hills and you're dealing with five thousand square foot lots, it might not make sense. We talked a little bit about that, but in terms of this application, we kind of have what we have right now.
But it seems like you're making my argument for me, right, that it.
I don't see how. I think it's the opposite of that. I mean, they're entitled to this under the current bylaws, so.
I, well, I would disagree with your interpretation of that, only because of the language that was specifically inserted and they're clearly subordinate. It seems like maybe this exact situation was taken into consideration in drafting of the bylaw.
I, I, I don't think it was, but I mean, I, how, how would you make it clearly subordinate? We've, this design has gone from two separated buildings to, you know, pushing it back behind the front of the house, lowering the roof line, eliminating windows, landscaping, and there's been a lot done to bury it. I mean, do you have other ideas that are reasonable?
Yeah, look, I, I, I have not even seen, I have not even seen the original plan.
Okay.
So for that, I do not know. I, I did hear about the changing of the roof lines and, 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 you know, people are somewhat upset that the conversation even turns to that, considering that the main thrust of the opposition is the size of the structure being connected as an accessory dwelling.
Well, the, the size is permitted under the bylaw, so if the size is the argument, you don't have an argument.
Well, the size, but it is when you compare it with the language clearly subordinate, because it's not clearly subordinate to the primary or single family dwelling that's there.
Well, it certainly appears that way to me.
Doesn't to me.
Well, I think that we.
I mean, maybe you've looked at it a lot more, but I, I mean, it's, after a while, it just kind of blends. But to me, I look at it and I say, it's the same, which is which, you know?
I think as, what we're saying is, the first time that the applicant came before the board, I would agree with you that it was not clearly subordinate. But then we listed a certain mitigations that were, could be taken, and we asked the public at that particular time if that, if those, those mitigation efforts were done, that would that be an acceptable proposal? And I think the applicant has certainly followed through on everything that this board has asked for. As Dan had mentioned, lowering the roof line, the hip roof to make it, that was one of the things to make the unit more subordinate. Different windows, you know, pushing it back further. So I, I really do feel like they've gone through and done a number of steps that both the board and the public asked of them at that time.
I mean, we've been, we've been talking about this for several months now.
Yeah, not having that, not having that in the prior meeting.
We've taken in all the suggestions.
I don't think these people, I mean, I represent a few of these people. I don't represent them all as of yet anyways, but the, I don't think they would have ended up in my office if they were happy with the change.
I, I'm not saying they're happy, but I think, I think the question might be, you know, in the neighborhood, is it a good idea to allow a seven hundred and fifty square foot structure to go on each house in that neighborhood? But our bylaw permits that now, so what we're left with is, how do you make it, you know, as reasonably subordinate as you can? you can, based on the fact that the main house is basically the same size as the accessory?
But it doesn't say reasonably subordinate, right? It says clearly subordinate.
All right. Let's move on to the gentleman to that.
My name is Alan Stewart, 47 North Avenue. It's, many of you folks can explain this to me, but it seems like we're picking out the drapes before we even qualify this as a viable subordinate accessory dwelling. As far as I, as far as I understand, there is nothing that qualifies this original property with the original house on it to have an accessory dwelling on it. It is not the family's primary home. It is, there's no financial situation where they're going to lose the property because they don't put this on there. I don't know what the other permutations are, but we don't meet any of the list that would qualify to say, hey, I want to put an accessory dwelling on my house. Okay, I've got to meet some, some sort of quality I've got to meet. And I don't understand that this is, this doesn't meet anything to start with.
The primary is that it will be owner occupied.
Well, the first application said it was owner occupied and it is not.
Well, we've got an affidavit that asserts that it will be.
Okay.
So that the permit, if granted, would be continued upon that. So it has to be owner occupied.
Until it's built and then...
The next criteria is, it talks to the size, and it fits within the size guidelines.
Well, the property itself, the accessory dwelling, is actually the same size as it was. It's just moved around.
Exactly.
Right? So maybe from the front, but not from her side or my side, does it look like a subordinate dwelling?
I just want to say something. I'm Barbara McFadden. And I thought the law was you can't put two houses on a 10,000 square foot lot. And that's exactly what they're doing. Sandcastle puts modular homes on lots. And so they're moving it close to the other house, but it's two homes on that 10,000 square foot lot. And when I read the master plan, I read all the other zoning stuff, if you want a duplex, you need 20,000 square feet minimum. So that's the thing I can't understand. Yes, what it says is 40% or 750 square feet. I think when they said 40%, it was a definition of what they meant by subordinate. Why didn't they say 60%? This is like 75% of the home. And so allowing this, you will allow them to be able to plop down a 750 square foot house in oh, so many places, not just in my neighborhood. This is bigger than me. You know, this is just, I'm pretty sure that the people that drafted the master plan were not thinking that our streets would become eventually full of these modular homes attached to other homes so that people could have rentals. We already have three rentals in our little block. Three rentals already. We were above the percent that Situate has rentals. So I just, I think that what you're doing is really dangerous, not just for me, but for everybody that lives in a neighborhood where there are double lots and there's already a homeowner, a 10,000 square foot lot. Anybody will be able to plop it down, as long as they move it close enough. And then that's a rental. I just, I don't understand, because the law does not say that.
They've been able to do that since we put in accessory dwelling, and that's been how long?
Since 92.
92.
Yeah, I think initially, there was the affordable...
We only end up with a handful of them every year.
No, but I've looked, we have driven around and looked at all these things that you have approved. And none of them are a house plopped down next to another house and connected somehow. They don't look like that. They have a common wall, they're clearly subordinate, it's a common driveway, it's not two driveways. I mean, if you look at it and you tell me that doesn't look like a duplex, okay, it looks like a duplex. I mean, I just, I can't, I've driven around the streets to see how these other accessory dwellings, this doesn't, just because it says you can have up to 750, it also says it has to be clearly subordinate. And it can't hurt the character of the neighborhood. And that's just not true. You know, there's a lot in this law that you could be focusing on instead of that, well, we said you could build 750. I think it's a mistake. And I don't know if you live in a neighborhood where this could happen, but I do. We all do. We all are here because we don't want that happening in our neighborhood. And we represent like 60, 70% of our block, because that's, we have lot properties. And I can show you, I'll show you this one thing. This is how many people can pop down a 750 square foot rental in their neighborhood.
Yeah, we have that.
Oh, you have? Oh, good. Okay. I just...
I agree. It's a concern to me, too. And when I look at the plan, how much could actually be built, you know, I don't think, in my view, that was what we were hoping would happen in that neighborhood. So I think it is a question about whether the bylaw should be modified. But it is what it is right now. It was adopted at town meeting. It started out, there was, it was only allowed to be affordable accessory dwellings, I believe, originally. And then how many years ago, we...
In a separate structure.
Yeah.
That was changed in 2010.
In 2010, it changed to allow them to have accessory dwellings that didn't have to have the affordable requirement. So, you know, that was discussed at town meeting, that that was a good idea. I'm not sure that it makes sense in a neighborhood like Sand Hills with the small lots. But in terms of the application tonight, it is what it is. I mean, it's, I think...
No, it's not. It clearly says in your law that it has to be clearly subordinate. And you said, Mr. Monger, at the first meeting, that the footprint of that house, which has not changed, was not clearly subordinate, was not subordinate, not even clearly.
That, my recollection was, that was based on when they came in initially, it was two separate houses.
It's still two separate houses.
Well, not in my view anymore. I mean, it's connected and it's similar to other, similar to other ones that have been approved before.
Now it's a duplex instead of two separate houses.
We're going to go one at, let's talk it one at a time. Steve, Mr. Minister, did you ever hear that?
I was just curious if this was a pre-existing non-conforming house to begin with.
No.
Well...
What?
Well, the only reason I ask that is because if it's a greater than a 30% increase, it's going to require a zoning board approval. And that's why I was just, logistically...
That's a possibility, but that's not up to, up to the planning board.
No, but as far as the neighbors are concerned, if it gets larger than 30%, they're going to be required to go to the zoning board of appeals to get relief on the size of the structure. It's not something the building inspector can just issue a credit for.
It's a good possibility.
That's all.
Sir?
Timothy Dunn, 41 Garden Road. This just, I mean, the woman, she's within the law. It's just, I've got an extra 75 on a square foot lot, sitting vacant. I'd love to be able to put a two-bedroom on it rental. So if we're going to set precedence, we're going to set precedence, I guess. And that's what we seem to be doing today, by approving it. It's going to set precedent for all these other lots in the neighborhood to go ahead with rental income.
Susan Lyons, 40 Garden Road. I guess I just can't get past the whole clearly subordinate thing. When you look at the new structure, the accessory dwelling, I think it measures 31 feet wide and the existing house measures 26 feet wide. So even visually, if you don't even go by the 750 square feet and the fact that that's almost 75% of the original structure, it's just not clearly subordinate. I don't see how it can be. It looks wider. It is wider. And again, it seems to me that the intent of the bylaw when they put in the 40% was, you know, that was what they were thinking. And like one of you said earlier, the 750 was meant to be much bigger lots, much bigger homes. And this is not a big lot, and it's not a big home. And I just, I think, I give them a lot of credit, the applicant and Mr. Thompson, they've, you know, made a lot of changes, done a lot of work on this. But again, the size is just the issue with me. I can't get past the fact that this is clearly subordinate. I don't see how anybody can say it's clearly subordinate. You know, you can turn, you can change windows and doors, but the fact of the matter is, it's 75% of the original house. And to me, that can't be clearly subordinate.
I just had to talk about the shared wall, Nancy Larkham, 38 Garden Road, because I'm the one who talked about shared wall. I talked about a shared wall and Mr. Limbaka. We actually, if you remember, we went, "shared wall." That's not a covered umbilical cord between two buildings. You know, we showed you Faye, integrated wall. And that's what we're talking about. The minute you have a little tiny thing or space in between that doesn't even actually connect to the accessory dwelling, I don't even know what it's there for anymore, except to meet the letter of the law. And it's not the intent of the law. It's not an integrated shared wall. And if we go back to the first hearing, we talked about the shared wall, soundproofing the wall, and then all of a sudden, it's a little tiny connector space. It doesn't look like anything else that's been approved. We've done the legwork. We've looked at them all around town, so... And I would only suggest that most of our homes are only 875 to 1,000 square feet in the neighborhood. So we're, we have small homes. What if we had a home that was 750? You'd still allow a 750-foot accessory dwelling? What if it was 500 square feet?
The bylaw says 750.
Well, the bylaw says 7, and I would only, again, I'm not an interpreter of law. But it seems that there are conflicting things in that law. One says maintain the integrity of a single-family neighborhood. It also then allows for additional property in Situate. So there is conflict after conflict in the law. 750 or 40%, which is greater, but clearly subordinate. Supermajority required, special permit, it's got to have some, it was as cut and dry as that. Why is all the other things needed to pass it?
I think it was the second meeting, might have been the second meeting we had for this. You all were unanimously against this for a myriad reasons. One of the reasons being the subordinate in the size of the structure versus this structure. Okay, don't look at it from the front, look at it from the top view. You guys probably all have that view. You can, you can move the Lego pieces around, the piece didn't get any smaller. You were all against this property almost unanimously, I believe, at the first meeting. And other than changing the position of the Lego pieces, nothing's changed. And now somehow, we're picking out chingles.
Comment for the board?
I guess my only comment is, you know, however we come out on this, I feel like we should, you know, commit to look at the actual bylaw on a going-forward basis to see if, you know, there might be recommended changes to it. Because I do have questions about, you know, when I look at the plan, about what could happen in the neighborhood. I used to work over on Marion Road Extension, and even without accessory dwellings, you know, it can be pretty tight. So I can appreciate that, you know, the idea that you look at if the whole street was filled with this, how much congestion there would be. And, you know, I don't think anybody anticipated that when the bylaw was passed. But I also feel like in terms of the current application, it is what it is according to the current bylaw. So I feel like the applicant has done...
I made reference to the first meeting.
Pretty much everything we've asked through all our meetings. I'm not quite sure how much more we could ask them to do that would be reasonable. But I do think on a going-forward basis, we should take a look at the bylaw in particular as it pertains to, you know, Sand Hills neighborhood, 5,000 square foot lots, things like that. That's my only comment on that.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. Eric, you had something?
Yeah, this is my neighborhood. And, you know, just amplifying what I said earlier, I'm really unhappy about this. I'm unhappy about the rancor that's caused in the neighborhood, between the neighbors. I'm unhappy about the fact that it, it kind of does look like a duplex. I'm unhappy about the fact that there's some ambiguity in the rules. I'm unhappy about the fact that, you know, to some degree, you could, you could look at this and say that, you know, the applicant has taken their half out of the middle. And yet, at the same time, they've qualified, they've satisfied the letter of the law. And no matter what we do, there are going to be some people that are going to be very unhappy here today. And so this is, you know, one of the things that lawyers say all the time is hard cases make bad law. And this is definitely a very hard case.
The, Eric's absolutely right. There's no, there's no perfect solution. I too lived until very recently in a very sort of tight neighborhood off Surfside Road in Minnetonka. Not dissimilar to this situation. I come back to, and, you know, it makes no difference at all, but I've made my living as an architect for the last 40-something years. It comes back to what you'll see visually, driving through your neighborhood, I think is going to be very much a unified L-shaped ranch, if you want to call it that. It's a larger house. We've already heard that the existing house, which is in not such good shape right now, is going to be fixed up as part of this project. I guess visually, I don't see how this can be an extreme detriment to the existing situation in the neighborhood or on this, on this lot. It's not a duplex. It can't be sold to two different families. It's got to remain under a single ownership. You could achieve the same thing by perhaps putting a second story on the existing house. I think that would be less attractive to my mind, but that's a personal opinion. It does seem to meet the requirements. I'm very mindful of conflicts that this kind of situation might bring up or might maintain. I, it's, as I said, I've lived, I've lived in a situation like this myself, so... However, I don't see how this board can do anything but approve, in my opinion, approve the proposal.
Let me chip on, I guess. I mean, there's a fair number of things that I'm not overly thrilled about, but I go back to the point that Bob just made. I'm sitting there saying, I've got guidelines that say, or bylaw that says, here are the criteria. And in my mind, I think that criteria has been met. Is it desirable? Probably not as desirable as I'd like to see, but I do think that it meets the criteria.
Can we ask a question?
Excuse me. But I also think that Bob makes an excellent point is, I think that when you're driving by and you're looking at it, it's not going to look like a duplex, it's going to look like a single-family house. I mean, it's an L-shaped ranch. Now, would it be nice to have more common walls? Only because it would make the footprint smaller, but not necessarily so. But you'd also lose the opportunity to have the windows that you have in that house if you came back up and you put the common wall in.
Yeah, and there's a certain value to articulation as well. You know, rather than having one large, just completely conjoined mass, you know, architecturally, it's a little more interesting. It's a little, it makes it a little less massive if you have some articulation.
And the concern about what else could happen in the neighborhood, I think that when you, when you have a piece of property that has a house and an opportunity to either expand it or change it, I think that's rights that you have as a property owner. And I think that the ability to do this is the same, gives you the same ability to do it in other houses. So I think that you have to be cognizant of what rights the people have when they bought that... that house and what they can do with it under existing zoning. I guess you had a question?
Well, I was just curious, because in your bylaw, yeah, you say seven-fifty, but it also says clearly subordinate. And you're choosing...why are you choosing to make one way more than the other? That's the question I have.
I don't think we are. We're choosing both. We're saying it meets both of those. In our view, it's clearly subordinate. That's what we're all saying. That's how we got to this design, by telling them how to make it clearly subordinate.
You said it was not clearly subordinate in the first meeting.
Yeah, the first meeting, it was two separate houses.
But you said the footprint of the house, they were...has not changed, and you said that was clearly subordinate, that was not subordinate. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought that...
No, it was not...it was nothing to do with...
You were ignoring that part.
No, it was nothing to do with the square footage. The square footage has always been allowed to be seven-fifty. It wasn't the square footage, it was the visual of clearly subordinate or not. They're permitted the seven-fifty, we've never questioned that. We can't force them to reduce the square footage, it's allowed by the bylaw.
But what does the clearly subordinate mean then?
It's an aesthetic issue that is in the eye of the beholder.
Well, you're the beholder.
Yes, we've said that. And your issue is properly taken, and that's the answer.
Sorry, we've, you know, we told the applicant how to make it clearly subordinate, they put the houses together, lowered the roof line, they pitched back, they landscaped, they did all the things, they did the window lines we wanted, they did all the things we said to make it look subordinate. And in my view, anyway, it's clearly subordinate now. You know, I think it's like Bill said, is it a perfect situation? No, and I personally wouldn't wanna see these on every lot in the neighborhood either. And I think it's a bigger issue for the bylaw itself, because the way it reads right now, yes, this could happen on every lot in the neighborhood, and I don't wanna see that happen. So, I think we need to look at changing the bylaw. But in terms of this application, they meet the guidelines. So, we have our hands tied. If they meet what the requirements are, we can't deny them their rights under the law.
For this application, you're gonna keep going back to, it is what it is right now. Currently, the owner does not reside in the house. Isn't that part of the stipulations that if you're...this is your family's home?
Yes.
And you have a need, a financial need?
The financial need's not part of it, there's...
Well, it is part of the words.
No, it's not, there's a...if you look at...I don't know, I can read it to you. There's a whole variety...let me see what...what section are we?
Five-thirty.
Fifty, yeah.
Well, and again, that is a stipulation. I mean, she has signed an affidavit that she will live there.
With respect to...
Right now, you keep going back to, right now, that this is the way the law is, this is...but right now, the owner doesn't live in the house.
Right now, that she doesn't have an accessory dwelling?
How can you apply for an accessory dwelling in rental property if you're...at the time of application, you don't live in the house?
By telling us that you will?
Yeah, it'll be a...it'll be a...
How do you enforce that?
At the time of occupancy.
That's not right now. You keep going back to, okay, well, the law is right now, okay, then let's deal with right now.
Yeah, the ownership is part of the law, so that is right now, and our decision will include that, that it's a requirement. They won't get a CO for the property unless they provide an affidavit, they give us proof that they...the owner will live there, that is part of it. So, that hasn't gone away, that's a requirement, it'll be part of our decision. The other things, if you look at the purpose, it lists a whole variety of purposes. It's not just, you know, the financial need, it's to make other types of housing units available, to provide a variety types of housing. It could be any one of those things, there's a whole variety of purposes, so...
We have a variety of housing in our neighborhood, we have a higher percentage in our neighborhood currently for rental properties, and the rest is Situate.
I'm just saying, those other criteria, there's so many ways to meet that legally that that's really not an issue.
There is so many other criteria that this does not meet.
But this doesn't have to be law.
So, the only thing, the only thing really it meets is that she's the owner and she's applied for an accessory dwelling, that's it.
That actually is not true. You don't know my financial situation, you don't know anything about my lifestyle, you know my household.
No.
So, I take offense to you remarking about my financial situation.
Well, I think we don't need to get into that right now.
I don't think that's...that's not part of the application.
I just wanna clarify that she, under the bylaw, the way it reads now, she doesn't have to explain that, that's not a requirement, that she prove financial hardship, it's not part of the bylaw now. She doesn't need to prove that.
It does, I believe part of the bylaw, it does have to be owner-occupied.
Yes, and would that be a requirement?
At the time of application.
No.
No, no.
I think it's occupancy.
Occupancy.
So, when it's...
We've got multiple ones that I'm aware of that we approve, where the owner that becomes the occupant wants the accessory dwelling as well, and that's the same thing that's on here. Let me...we've passed nine o'clock, it's like nine oh five. We've got a public hearing for a site plan administrative review for ZD New Driftway. If the applicant is so willing, we'll continue on with this, and then we'll pick that up shortly.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
I just don't want there to be any confusion about what's required. I think, you know, your attorney's made an argument about clearly subordinate, that is a requirement. So, you can make an argument about whether you think that or not, it's, you know, the board's gonna decide whether we think that. The seven-hundred-and-fifty, they are permitted to do that. You know, the other criteria, there's really nothing else to talk about. I mean, would you agree, under the current bylaw, there's...
I made my argument.
Yeah, so I think, you know, he's looked at it, as have we, and that, I think that's the argument, based on the current bylaw, that you could make. Is it clearly subordinate or not? But beyond that, I think the bylaw is what it is. Should the bylaw be fixed? Possibly.
I'm just gonna make this laugh, I won't say anymore after this. But the law says you can't have two homes on a ten-thousand-square-foot lot, and this is clearly two homes. The Sandcastle, it's a home, you come, you put it in, and it's a home. It's two houses now on ten-thousand square feet, so I'm just appealing to you to do the hire thing, which is look at the law as it was originally intended, was not to allow two homes on a ten-thousand-square-foot lot, 'cause that's what it is. Forget the clearly subordinate, it's two homes. That's why it hasn't changed to a clear law, because they want a home, they want two homes on the same lot. I don't care how close they are together, but that's what we're dealing with, and it says you can't do that in the law.
Well, I mean, I beg to differ, it says under the law, you can have an accessory dwelling, so if it meets the definition of accessory dwelling, it's not a second home. And it's right here in the bylaw, so you may disagree, I mean...
We do disagree.
Your attorney's not making that argument, so I'm assuming, I'm preaching to the choir here, but it's allowed by the bylaw, yeah.
It's a single-family home, though, you do have two driveways going in, right?
The new property fills, the new application completely fills the property.
I mean, I appreciate the frustration, and, you know, I'm not happy with the outcome necessarily, and I don't like the idea of this happening all over the neighborhood, but, you know, the board were left with what the bylaw, that the town meeting adopted, is in front of us, so we need to determine, does it meet that or not?
I just wanted to say, there are certain things, like square footage, seven-fifty, it's an exact quantity, you can debate that, or maybe, or you should say, you can't debate that. But something like subordinate or clearly subordinate, I think that's what we're coming down to, is that, those two words. And that, to some degree, I believe, is somewhat subjective. And I think, as Dan said, we asked the applicant to say, "Okay, to make it more subordinate, please do these five," or whatever those things are. So, I think it's in the right of the board to look at that and say, make a decision whether it's subordinate or not.
And I think that's really where the whole, the hub of the whole argument is.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's what does a reasonable person think is subordinate?
And I also wanted to state, like everyone else, that it's not, I think we do need to look at this, definitely, going forward.
Yeah, I think if the neighborhood looked like the plan that they provided, that's not a good thing. It's too congested now, and I don't think anybody wants that. So, I think we need to look at that townwide, is that, does this bylaw work for the town? And was that the intent to have this happen, because it could happen?
Yep.
So, we may wanna look at amending it.
Will this need to go before zone?
That I don't know.
It's not our jurisdiction, so it's something you can certainly look into and...
Then, if obviously it's gonna go forward, could we ask other questions around?
Does she get an occupancy permit for the new building if she's not residing in the other building? What if there are existing tenants? Do they get evicted? What if they can't be evicted? We have so many other questions that have never been dealt with, because we're talking about roof line and windows. The building that exists right now, as you can see, isn't quite disrepair. Nobody's talking about how that's gonna look like the new building.
I think we did actually discuss that at one of the meetings.
We did? We discussed the new, the existing building and what was gonna be done to it?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, I believe that the new structure was going to be, the addition was going to be created, and at that point, that she would move in there, and then they would be fixing up the primary dwelling.
And she's gonna move in there with her two children? You're gonna move in? You're gonna move into the new, the little building, the two-bedroom, with your two children?
No, the original home is my home.
You're gonna do that home, yes. You're gonna renovate that home?
She's gonna occupy the...
That's my point, does she have to actually be residing, or can she be...I don't know. So, she builds the new accessory building and then rents it, does she have to be actually physically on the property living?
Yes.
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 Okay. Okay.
Any other thing, anything else on the board? Anything else on the public?
That'll be all.
Want a motion?
Agreement?
I don't think...
You can motion it, see?
If you read us something, Richard will find out.
Just be careful, because there may be second pages, a third page.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what? Okay. All right. I move that, to make a motion for the findings of fact. A motion was duly made and seconded to make the following findings of fact concerning the accessory dwelling at thirty-three Garden Road. Number one, according to the Town of Situate Accessors' records, the property at thirty-three Garden Road is owned by Maria Marcelino. Number two, on June twenty-fifth, 2012, John Townsend of Sandcastle Homes applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling with the consent of the owner. The site plan showed an accessory dwelling in a separate structure, this request was withdrawn on August ninth, 2012. Number three, on October eleventh, 2012, Sandcastle Homes filed an accessory dwelling special permit for an accessory dwelling attached to the existing single-family dwelling at thirty-three Garden Road. Number four, according to the Accessors' records, the floor area of the primary dwelling is eight-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet, one-thousand-and-seventy-six square feet, including the enclosed porch. The floor area of the accessory dwelling shown on the plan is seven-hundred-and-forty-six square feet. This is less than the seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet and meets the requirement of five-three-zero dot-two-F for accessory dwellings. Number five, the site plan shows a driveway and a garage for the primary dwelling and a separate driveway for the accessory dwelling. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and ample parking for the primary dwelling. Number six, the property is located in the residential R-three zoning district, the setbacks for the accessory dwelling, as shown on the plan, are thirty-six-point-four feet front, forty feet to the rear, and twenty-point-nine side, and appear to comply with the zoning bylaws. The applicant will provide a plan stamped by a licensed professional surveyor to the planning board prior to applying for a building permit. The structure is one-story and will comply with the building height requirements for the district. Number seven, the applicant has submitted a signed, notarized statement that she will live on the property. Number eight, the application meets the standards of Situate zoning bylaw, section five-three-zero, for an accessory dwelling special permit. And that is complete.
Do I have a second?
I think the only amendment, I think that maybe we talk about, let me see the affidavit, it's number...
Last one, or next one?
The applicant has submitted a signed notarized statement that she will live on the property. I guess the question is whether, you know, we want sort of like an annual check of that or something along those lines.
We got that in the conditions.
You did? Okay, we're not to that part, okay. All right, then never mind.
One other thing, I think, when we first started, just a small change, I think it was thirty-six-point-two feet was the...instead of thirty-six-point-four?
On number six? Number six.
That's what this shows, anyway.
The one I've got is thirty-six-point-four.
Well, there's a closer one on the other corner.
Oh, for the setback.
The setback.
The setback on the site plan, yeah. Thirty-six-point-four.
Point-four front.
Okay, I thought that was a four.
The left corner is point-four, and the right corner is point-two.
Oh, okay, yep, yep, that should be thirty-six-two, yeah.
Oh, I see, 'cause, yeah. Do I need to reread that?
Nope. Okay, so we have a motion for findings of fact, which has been modified and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, now under the... So, that's the finding of fact, this is the potential decision.
You know, I can make copies of this if you...
No, we can do it.
If you feel more comfortable, okay.
That's all right.
I'll do that next time.
Okay. I move to close the public hearing and approve the accessory dwelling special permit for thirty-three Garden Road, excuse me, with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall meet all the requirements of the Building Department, the Board of Health, the Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, the Water Department, and other town agencies. Number two, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled, "Proposed and Existing Floor Plan -1," "Plan Proposed Perspective View Front Left -2," "Proposed Perspective View Front -3," "Proposed Perspective Rear Left -4," "Connecting Roof Front Overhead Perspective -5."
Now, which one is that?
Yeah, I think we need to make sure that we have the right ones here.
Yeah, I think this is gonna make a decision.
I think we're gonna make a decision.
Two, two has the little jog and...
I think we're leaning towards the lower roof, is that correct?
I think it's a very tough flashing detail at that chimney if we don't break the roof at that point.
It also helps make it look more subordinate, too, with the lower, smaller mounting.
With, yeah.
So, you'd be looking at, it's on page six.
What we're talking about is basically...
Nine of this back.
No, it's actually page three.
Three.
Three is the one that's... Not that. He's talking about this one. Oh, the...yeah, but that's got the higher roof line.
Look at page three, Richard.
Three is the jog, and six eliminates the jog.
And that's the one...
This one.
And that's the one that will miss the chimney if we jog it.
But Dan has a point, he says it's a higher roof line.
It's shown the higher roof line, though.
Yeah.
And it actually comes into that.
Is it actually higher, is that just perspective?
I think that's just a perspective issue. It goes, it'll go back until it hits the downslope coming in the other direction and stop, it'll actually drop the ridge line. It's just not, it's not quite drawn correctly.
Okay, basically sheets one through four. Sheets one through four?
Yep.
That's option one.
So, if you're gonna change that to say sheets one through four?
See, I was looking at sheet six in terms of the height of the ridge line. I like the jog, but the height of the ridge line on six is shown lower.
That's something weird.
It'll draw. It's not, it's not drawn correctly.
Yeah. Yeah.
What's gonna happen is, this is gonna drop down here.
It's a different perspective.
Right.
Three, you're looking...
Sheet three shows it. Because sheet three shows it.
It's getting very difficult to hear up here, so let's have one meeting. But there's a hallway if you wanna have your own meeting.
The gophers.
So, we're on, we've resolved.
So, if I just say sheets one through four, is that...
One through four.
Okay. So, let me restate condition number two. Except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled, "Proposed and Existing Floor Plans," sheet one through four. Oh, I don't know. Okay, the Marcelino addition, 33 Garden Road, Situate, Mass., prepared by Sandcastle Group dated 12/06/12. A revised certified plot plan must be submitted to the planning board prior to applying for a building permit for the accessory dwelling. I just, I just said, yeah, number two. So I said, the plans entitled Proposed and Existing Floor Plans, sheet one through four.
Okay, so we'll cross out five, six, seven.
Okay, because it's one through four.
Yeah, okay.
Here you go after, okay, you got a different sentence than last.
That's the one.
Might I just reread that?
Well, so no-
Reread two.
So number two, I'll, I'll read if that's acceptable. Well, the thing is that you either call out each one individual or you just say sheets one through four.
We'll call out each one individual.
Okay. So then that means connecting roof overhead perspective five, connecting roof perspective six, and connecting front left perspective seven, and connecting eight, correct? All right, I'm going to reread the number two condition. Except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled Proposed and Existing Floor Plan -1, Plan Proposed Perspective View Front Left -2, Proposed Perspective View Front -3, Proposed Perspective Rear Left -4. Marcelino addition, 33 Garden Road, Situate, Mass., prepared by Sandcastle Group dated 12/06/12. A revised certified plot plan must be submitted to the planning board prior to applying for a building permit for the accessory dwelling. Condition number three, the property at 33 Garden Road shall contain a maximum of two dwelling units, the existing dwelling and the accessory dwelling as proposed. The footprint, number of bedrooms, and/or the square footage of the accessory dwelling shall not be increased without prior approval of the planning board. Number four, the owner of the property shall reside on the property as long as it contains an accessory dwelling unit. Number five, the existing dwelling shall be upgraded to conform to the perspective sketches submitted with the application within two years of the date of this approval. Number six, the planning board will require an onsite inspection for conformance to the approved plans and these conditions prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued for the accessory dwelling. Number seven, no on-street parking shall be permitted. Number eight, a new eight-inch AC main with one-inch copper, one-inch tap, one-inch LW are required for water surface, for the, water service, excuse me, for the accessory dwelling as requested by the Department of Public Works Water Division. Number nine, this special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days of the date of filing with the town clerk. The owner shall provide proof of this recording to the planning board. Number 10, this special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9. Number 11, the planning board reserves the right to review compliance with this special permit at any time. This special permit shall terminate if the use is not in accordance with the decision and its conditions.
So two suggestions, one is on the last one. We got to put owner occupied. If we put that in the last one and then, we were talking about an annual visitation.
Or an affidavit, I mean, maybe. I guess, I guess versus an annual, I mean, I think I'd rather have it be, you know, at the request of the planning board. You know, they'll provide an affidavit versus an ongoing, just from a practical perspective. So I think you make the requirement that it's-
We're not in the monitoring business.
Make the requirement that it's owner occupied. And then make the requirement that on our, our request, they'll provide an annual affidavit that they are living at the residence.
The requirement, I think, is a notarized statement. I like an affidavit better. The latter being under oath, the other one just being a certification that the signing party is that real person. The other thing is, is could we require that every time that there's a change in title, you know, they sell?
Yeah.
Then, then there should be an updated affidavit from the new buyer or the new, the new owner.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, just put that in one of the last ones.
And I, I'm not sure whether the affidavit, can we require that if that's not what the, the bylaw actually requires? I think it just requires an affidavit.
Well, it's a condition, special permit, we can make it whatever we want.
Okay.
So we have a modified decision?
Yeah, I've got something that reads, on the request of the, at the request of the planning board, an affidavit shall be provided that the accessory unit is owner occupied.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then at, upon each sale of the unit, you know, well, yeah, I guess upon each sale of the unit, a new affidavit shall be provided that the owner-
And instead of sale, it should say transfer.
Property instead of unit, right?
Yeah, property.
Yeah, because it's not-
Doesn't make any difference which of the units the owner occupies.
Yeah. Upon any transfer of ownership of the property.
So it'd be, could be by sale.
Could be one of those things you get in the closing.
Yeah. Devise, inheritance, foreclosure, whatever.
That the owner, that the owner resides on the property shall be provided to the planning board.
Yeah.
And I suppose if, if it should ever be that the owner is not occupying, then, then the certificate of occupancy is revoked at that point, is that right?
I think it'd be easier, that's easier said than done.
Yeah. And just the special permit elapses.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what would happen.
We, that, we get control over a special permit, we don't have control over the occupancy.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a modified decision? Do we have a second?
Do I have to read that or does it-
Yeah, why don't you read it back so we're all clear on what it is?
Why don't you read, Laura?
Okay, here. It starts on the request of the planning board.
Okay, so an amended condition, number 12. On the request of the planning board, an affidavit shall be provided that the accessory unit is owner occupied.
That the, the primary dwelling is owner occupied.
Oh, okay, that either the pri-
Oh, I'm sorry.
One of the units is, because it can be either one.
It can be either one, yeah.
That the-
That either the primary or the accessory dwelling is owner occupied.
Oh, that's why we're having an architect do it, so it, so it makes sense.
I'm sorry, was it? Okay. At the request of the planning board, an affidavit shall be provided that the, either the primary unit or the accessory unit is owner occupied. And the next, I guess, condition 13. At the transfer of the ownership of the property, a new affidavit, affidavit shall be provided of the owner, that the owner resides in one of the units, and that shall be provided to the planning board.
That work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions, revisions? Do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
One process that's there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's input.
Thank you.
Can you also sign on this one?
Well, I haven't participated in the previous session for Driftway or with the design review or anything else you want to run at.
What do we have on now?
Site plan administrative review, 17 new Driftway.
Yeah.
That's the pizza place.
You missed that one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It's fine, I mean, you can listen in and-
Oh, yeah.
I, I was absent as well.
But I think it's just a majority vote, right?
Is it? It's a site plan. All right, so we're on to, yeah, site plan administrative review. Okay, it's now 9:30, so thanks for waiting. We're on to the continued public meeting, site plan administrator of review of 17 new Driftway. Laura, you want to pick us off as to where we're at on this? Does that make sense? I know we met last time and they were going to come back with some-
Right.
Additional information and-
Well, I think we, we kind of approved the, over the course of the last couple of weeks.
We talked about, one of the things when they came in the last time, one of them was traffic circulation through the site, trying to define the parking spaces and gravel, parking area better. Getting some, some renderings that show better how the designer review comments were going to be complied with. Showing the signs, showing that the sign will be provided.
Right.
And I think those are some of the main ones because-
There was some, the one, a butter, there was a mention of maybe some additional trees to help with the-
Okay.
Thank you.
The screening. The screening.
Okay.
Some additional screening and then there were also, there were some issues brought up about the odor from pizza and garlic, like being kind of pervasive around Ford Place, and whether anything could be done to address that. And it was pointed out this is going to be a wood-fired pizza oven. But that's one of the things that kind of found its way into the motion to try to, you know, the recommended, suggested motion to try to, you know, make sure that this is, how this is, it's going to be run, that it's going to be a wood-fired oven.
Okay. Well, it looks like you brought some things with you. You want to go ahead and go through what you have and what changes you've made?
We've got the signage, where is all that?
The signboard, this one here.
For the direction.
Want me to give you everything at once?
Yeah, I can come up and, yeah.
Yeah.
Bring it up and tell us about each one as you go through it and we'll gather around. Just put it right here while I'll look.
Okay. All right. The last meeting, we wanted to make sure we had pizza takeout this way. So coming from the road, we would have a sign here saying going this way, then coming from the harbor, the arrow would be going in this way. Okay, so people would know, and once you get in there, you can't get out, so.
Right.
That's that, and then needed-
The writing is not necessarily-
Yeah, that's-
So you've got directional signage, so when you come in here, it's going to direct people to go this way for pizza takeout. So we create that thing where people are colliding and-
Is it two signs? Or is it one sign?
Well, it's one sign, but coming from the harbor-
Yeah.
Depending on which side you're looking at. It's going to go perpendicular to the road.
Oh, I see, so there's going to be one here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One here, okay.
And then you needed a sign that says-
Yeah, parking for takeout. By the two spaces, yeah.
Uh, let's see.
The terracotta color.
Yep, terracotta, and then, you know-
Some landscaping.
Do you have that picture of that? Hey, I made copies for you anyways. And then, this probably belongs to- And for the ergobar sign, this is what it looks like now.
Right.
It's taking this, putting this on the fence where it originally was, and I'm going to have my paint and wood-fired pizzas matches GW.
Okay. Go right on the same sign.
Yeah, just go the same sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that works.
That's great.
Sure.
Yep, doesn't make any new impact.
The only thing that we'd like to propose, we went back in there and started to really crunch the interior, and it gets getting very tight in there. So what we'd like to propose is bumping out the pizza oven, so the actual pizza oven is outside and enclosed.
Oh, oh, so that's what this is here?
Yeah, that's this from the front, and this is what it looks like from the back now.
Oh, I see. Yeah, get it outside of the structure a little bit.
Fits right in here.
That's what this is, yeah.
Existing parking is right there.
Tachy air conditioning condenser behind it.
Yeah, the pad's going right here.
Oh, yeah, could fit right there.
What that does is a couple of things, it gives us more room inside, and it also takes that tremendous amount of heat that the fire oven takes away, lets off. It'd be helpful in many ways, but I think it looks-
How big is that, like roughly?
Seven by seven.
Seven by seven, okay.
Now, would this wouldn't, you wouldn't have this ridge.
No, no, it's just when a computer, I mean, you know, when you're playing with a computer.
Right.
Richard knows about playing with computers, don't you?
I just wanted to-
That won't be there.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm.
That won't be there.
Okay.
There's a little eraser on the top in the upper left there, you just pull that down.
Okay. And what, what else? Any, anything else? So we've got the bump out, we've got landscaping, we've got the signage, sort of all what we asked for.
Were you going to have like a no parking sign or something in here?
Oh, yeah, we did.
I'm just, this is the drive-through here, right?
Yeah, well, right here, there's, no one really, no one's ever parked there, because cars park here, you know, we've never had a problem. But if you want-
Well, I guess- I'd prefer to have something there because I just, I just think with how crowded the site might-
More traffic coming in for that.
Not that people are going to, people might ignore it still, but it might help.
Yeah, well, definitely-
I'm sorry, what are you asking for?
A no parking sign right here. We don't want people stacked up all along here. Yeah.
You could also put some rocks right along the edge there, so I'm not tempted to kind of pull off the road.
Yeah.
Get some big boulders that go right along the edge of the paved area.
Some undercarriage wreckers.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I mean, are you okay with that, putting some, if we put a condition to put a few boulders there and just a single sign says no parking along the edge, is that, does that work?
Can we put up on the bank that there's strip roads there so people don't park there as they come into the drive?
And down the aisle, come up and see.
Yeah. We're talking about up here on the curve here, we don't, we don't want people parking and stacking up along here, so.
We need the travel, I think we can restrict the travel and I have to change.
No, I wouldn't, it'd be, it'd be off the-
No, off the lane, we're saying like put a, put a couple of boulders and signs that says no parking.
Can even, can people even pull off here? I don't think they can.
No, because it goes up and it's-
Yeah, it's all embankment.
Oh, it does, okay.
All right, okay.
All right. Well, maybe just a sign.
Just a sign.
Just a sign. Just no parking.
You need a four by four to like, it really goes up in an air.
Yeah, that's fine. That works for me, just a sign along there says no parking and-
And I just had one clarification. Is the, the one-way only for the pizza pickup or is it for anyone? I'm just curious.
It's for pizza, because for the pizza-
Pizza, we were specific to pizza takeout.
Okay, all right, I'm just asking.
Isn't it going to be kind of confusing if pizza, you know, has to go one way and other people can go all different, I mean-
Well, I think it's-
They don't want pizza coming this way and then going this way.
The people, though, we haven't had one person go this way and that way that I know of.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it'll, it'll help with the traffic a little bit to direct people that way.
Probably does need to say just one way or something. Pizza this way.
No, no worse than the parking in front of Maria's, that's for sure.
Right.
All right. Doesn't look like anybody from the public, Steve?
Yeah, did you say you're not going to be able to smell the pizza? Because, I mean, I would prefer to smell it before I show up, because that'll bring me in.
Sure.
Well, there was a neighbor that was concerned about that.
Because the neighbor's put on 20 pounds, that's why.
Stephen, did you have anything?
No, I think, I think they've pretty well covered it. And we did talk at one point in time about just, you know, parking bumpers, but I-
I think that's in the condition.
That you got that in the condition.
Well, we have the parking lot-
I think it was either parking bumpers or signage, I'm not su, I don't remember exactly.
Because that's an embankment too, you know, we can't, it doesn't go, it's not flat, it goes up on a, it goes up. flat, it goes up on a, it goes up, it's not flat. The reason for those bumpers was just to help people sort themselves out and where to park like horizontally, so...
So bumper is one of those like four-foot long?
Those are concrete, yeah.
Well, you know, if we want to get like big logs, can we do that?
Yeah.
Like a nice, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think we'll make the condition either or, either...
Ties.
Ties, something like this.
Yeah, parking spaces.
I think it actually, didn't it, if I remember right, when I was reading this, didn't it say something or any demarcation?
I think, I think we said something like that. We'll put something up, we'll probably do railroad ties and logs, something that'll...
Yeah.
You know what, you could just go over to the MBAT lot next door, they've got a bunch of concrete ties stacked up there some night, just grab them, just kidding.
Bob, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Richard, do you have anything else?
No, I think that from what I read, where we were reviewing the information, I think that they've adhered to everything we asked for.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, it was, I think when you came in before, it was pretty close to being fine the way it was, it was just some little details we wanted to get cleaned up, so I, I think it looks good. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we do.
Wow. Are you ready? Alright, I move to approve a site plan titled Site Improvement Plan, Number Seventeen New Driftway, Assessors Map Fifty-Three, Block Five, Lots Twenty-Seven Through Thirty-One, Situate, Massachusetts, Sheets One Through Five, Prepared by Morse Engineering Company Incorporated, Dated Seven, Five, Eleven, Revised on Seven, Twenty-Seven, Eleven, Including Site Entrance Plan Alternative A, Dated Eight, Ten, Eleven. The revised Ice House Drawings and Renderings with Canopies Attached to This Decision With Additional Drawings and Renderings For JW's Wood Fired Pizza As Attached, Subject To The Following Conditions. Number One, The Ten-Foot By Twenty-Foot Building Shall Be Restricted As To Use To A Pizza Takeout Business. No Tables Or Chairs Shall Be Permitted Inside Or Outside Near The Building Without Approval Of The Planning Board. Inside Seating Shall Be Restricted To Benches. Customers Shall Be Served From The Shed Roof Extension Closest To The Designated Parking. Number Two, A Wood Fired Pizza Oven Shall Be Used To Reduce Odors From Cooking Food. Number Three, Parking Spaces On Gravel Throughout The Site Shall Be Delineated By Bumper Stops Or A Similar Method Approved By The Town Planner. Two Parking Spaces Directly To The Left Of The Shed Roof Extension On The Pizza Kitchen Shall Be Designated For Customer Pickup. Number Four, One Way Sign Shall Be Installed To Guide Traffic Through The Site. Prior To Installation, A Plan Shall Be Provided To The Planning Board Office For Review And Potential Input To The Board. A No Parking Sign Shall Be Added Along The Curved Drive Leading To The Pizza Takeout.
I think you can leave that sentence out about the plan, because they kind of just did that, if you want, the sentence just before about the plan being provided to the planning board.
Oh, having another plan.
Oh, okay.
They just did that.
Alright, um, one way sign, signs shall be installed to guide traffic throughout, I'm sorry, number four, one way sign shall be installed to guide traffic through the site. A No Parking Sign Shall Be Added Along The Curved Drive Leading To The Pizza Takeout. Number Five, Construction Shall Comply With All Federal, State, And Local Requirements, Including Those Of The Board Of Health And The Department Of Public Works Water Division.
Oh, can we see the building department too? Because I'm thinking about that oven and how it's, you know, like it's in its little, little box there, and the fire stuff and all that, and they would be the ones to oversee all that.
Neil's making us get a stamp, set of plans, he's nervous about the fire thing too, so we're, we're on it, yeah.
Alright, so, number five, I'll reread again. Construction Shall Comply With All Federal, State, And Local Requirements, Including Those Of The Board Of Health, DPW, Water Division, And The Building Department. Number Six, The Design Review Committee Recommendations Shall Be Incorporated, Including A, uh, A condition, or A dot, a shed roof shall be used for the proposed extension of the building. B, The Shed Extension Shall Be Painted The Same Terracotta Color Consistent With The Burger Bar, And The Remaining Building Shall Be Neutral Gray With White Trim And Doors. C, The HVAC System Shall Be A Duckless System With Condenser Units. It Shall Be Located On The Side Of The Building Closest To The Driftway And Shall Be Completely Screened By Fencing Or Dense Vegetation. No Exhaust Fan Shall Be Used. D, An Oning Shall Be Installed Across The Front Of The Building, And If A Logo Is Used, Shall Function As The Attached Sign. A Gold Color Consistent With The Burger Bar Shall Be Used For The Oning And Logo. E, The Customer Entry Door Shall Be Colonial Style With Half-Glass, And The Kitchen Door Will Be A Solid Colonial Panel Style With No Entry Hardware. F, Decorative Pavers Will Be Added To The Entry Area. These Shall Be The Same As Those Installed At The Burger Bar Building. G, Decorative Lighting Consisting Of Three Goose Neck Fixtures Shall Be Used On The Facade Facing The Parking Lot. The Fixtures Used Shall Be The Same As Those Installed Along The Wall Of The Burger Bar. H, If Security Lighting Is Required, It Shall Be Installed On The Sides Of The Building Away From The Residences. Any Exterior Lighting Shall Be Shielded And Directed Downward. Condition Number Seven, Additional Planning Shall Be Installed To The Rear Of The Building To Create Effective Screening From Abutters. Number Eight, Prior To The Application For A Building Permit, The Applicant Shall Provide The Following To The Planning Board Office. A, A Revised Plan Showing The Details Above. B, A Stamped Statement From A Registered Land Surveyor Indicating That The Constructed Gravel Parking Is Of Sufficient Si, excuse me, Sufficient Size To Contain The Number Of Parking Spaces Shown On The Plan At The Size Required By The Zoning Bylaw. And C, A Landscape Plan Showing Additional Plannings Proposed For Screening And Plantings And Potted Trees Integrated With The Building As In The Burger Bar. Condition Number Nine, Prior To Application For A Sign Permit Or Installation Of A Sign, A Sketch Of The Proposed Sign Shall Be Provided To The Planning Board Office? Do we still want that?
They've already did that.
Yeah, so I'm going to scratch.
Yeah.
So this is the new nine. Site Plan Approval Shall Lapse After Two Years From The Grant Thereof If A Substantial Use Or Construction Thereof Has Not Sooner Commenced Except For Good, Except For Good Cause. Such Approval For Good Cause May Be Extended In Writing By The Planning Board Upon Written Request Of The Applicant Submitted To The Planning Board At Least Sixty Days Prior To The Expiration Of The Two-Year Period. Is that it? I believe that's it. Alright, just one second. There was nothing about the little addition of the flag, do we want to write that in or does it matter?
Are we going to reference, reference this plan?
Yeah, we're going to reference that plan.
So it's okay then?
Okay.
So we're going to incorporate this plan into the decision that shows the bump out on it?
Yeah, because the one thing I was thinking is like the, it says the HVAC unit, because I mean, it could actually be behind that and kind of shielded, because it says it shall be located on the side of the building closest to the Driftway And Shall Be Completely Screened By Fencing Or Dense Vegetation.
Why don't you just cross out fencing or dense vegetation?
Say it'd be screened.
Completely screened, then it could be screened by the building or anything else.
Yeah, how's that?
Yep, and we'll just incorporate this plan right into the decision, so that shows the bump out and we're covered.
If you want to take out the part about it being on the side of the building in case it's in the back of the building or whatever, you, you just want to say the HVAC shall be completely screened.
Yeah, that's good. Say it's just screened, yeah?
Okay, so that would read, the HVAC system shall be a duckless system with condenser units, it shall be completely screened, no exhaust fan should be used.
Okay, anything else, anybody?
Is that it?
I have a second.
Favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to eating your pizza soon?
Welcome to Pizza Heaven!
I know!
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Deliver Thursdays at seven thirty.
Laura, you want these?
Yeah, right.
We're going to do, um, we're going to practice, we're going to do a dry run, get the restaurant on Monday or Tuesday night, so all you, I'll send the invitation, all you are invited, and you can try, Rich knows, right? He's headed in order, so...
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you, Laura, do you want me to, you can have those, capture, do you need, do you want the one with the sign? The one that's good, the sign is good. You want that? Yep.
Well, there's only a certain number of colors you can get out of the computer program.
Exactly.
Sixteen point seven million.
No, I think it's going to be very, very short.
It probably looks terracotta on the screen, but when it gets printed out, yeah.
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
Oh, is this the new sign?
Yeah.
Actually, a slice of pizza, yeah, that sounds good, yeah.
You'll be pleased to know that I got a really good report on your restaurant from some folks I was talking to today.
A bigger wall? What do you mean?
I think there's one with like more wall.
I, I don't know if...
Thanks, I gave you what I have, I gave you everything that we had, yeah.
So I have a place to go get pizza?
Yeah, and I wanted to say to both of you and, well, actually all of you, just thank you for, I know it took like three times, but it's really very much appreciated, working with the board and the design review committee as well, so...
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Hi, boss.
Okay, we're right on schedule.
Did we get all of our bookkeeping type business done? I don't think we did.
We still got...
Liaison and town planner, right?
We got liaison reports, town planner report, and then we got the budget request.
And the stormwater, if we're going to talk about that?
Oh, stormwater, yeah, forgot about that.
This can go...
I assumed it was there. I assumed that they're in business.
They're in business, yeah.
They are in business.
Should Laura knock off the town planner?
Neighbors went out and paid a lawyer.
Do the budget?
Oh, do that, sure.
Those neighbors went out and paid a lawyer to write this.
This is really the same as, as it was before.
It's not the sign of litigation to come.
So...
No changes since what we discussed last time?
No changes.
No, they're, they're very extra...
We talked a little bit about doing a community preservation plan, and I talked to, I talked to Lisa Fenton about that, I think she's looking into it. There's not much that we can do to support it because it doesn't really cost that much to begin with, it's about twenty thousand dollars, and they get like a really solid financial plan, I thought, so I hope that they do it, but it's not, you know, really our decision.
No, I think they, I think they actually have to do it, under the law, they're supposed to have it now, so I think she is going to look into their administrative budget and they need to find the money to do it, and I think it's just, they're going to try to coordinate with us so we can have some input and work back and forth and, and maybe some of the things come out of that, and we could talk about incorporating maybe into the master plan or modifying sections of the master plan, so I think when I talked to her, she said, you know, it's a strong desire to kind of work with us and brainstorm, and I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and they're going to be here next time?
Well, they were going to be here on the twentieth, but then we also wanted to do this medical marijuana on the twentieth, so I don't know if we can really do...
The EDC coming on the twentieth?
Yeah, you've got the EDC at, at seven thirty to eight thirty.
Let's leave it the twenty eighth the way it is.
Okay, yeah, do the CPC a little bit later.
We'll move them to the January meeting, because basically we're meeting on the tenth, and then we're not meeting until the, the, the eighth, eighth of January, something like that. January tenth is the next meeting after the twentieth. No, I was talking about CPC. Oh, CPC. So CPC's meeting Monday, and then they're meeting again on January, and I think it's the tenth of January, or maybe the eighth, the eighth of Tuesday? Yeah, I think it's, I think it's the eighth. So you want the CPC to come here on January tenth meeting? Yeah, I'll talk with them.
Okay, great. Um, getting back to the planning board, but one of the things that I'm going to make sure we do have in there is, I'm trying to get a relationship with an engineering firm like Kohler &amp; Co. Antonio, I don't know if you are familiar with them, but they're, they're a good local firm, they have a GIS division, they, they've done GIS work that's involved Situate before, and I want to be able to send them maps and have them come out on a plotter and look good, because what happens here is, we're not tied into the plotter, so if we are going to use it, we're going to have to walk downstairs with a CD or something, and...
It's just easier for them to do it, yeah.
So I think it may be easier, and I think we may come out with, whichever one gives us a better product, because the WRPD map, that big zoning map, it was kind of hard to see, I thought the lines were kind of gray and a little, you know, washed out looking, so, going to be working on that, and I think ideally, we would be doing, we would be starting work on a master plan, but I don't see how I'm going to have the time to do that, and I don't know how you guys are either with all this medicinal, you know, marijuana type, you know, all these, these things that come up that you really have to deal with.
I kind of picture us working on the CPC plan with them first as a first step, and then that'll address, you know, recreation, affordable housing and historic, and those are sections of the master plan, so maybe we get through that process, and then maybe on the next wave, we look at trying to incorporate some of those decisions into the master plan, so it might be something to do after that. The CPC plan's going to take a while to pull together.
Oh, sure, and one of the other things that is, is ongoing is, we really need to start a update of the open space recreation plan, because that's going to expire in September of two thousand thirteen, and to apply for the self-help grant, because I can foresee that we'll keep, you know, although almost all the open space in the West End is already owned by the town, there are probably a few parcels that people will want to buy, and as long as the CPA keeps, you know, providing money to buy open space, you know, so...
You mean it's going to expire? When you say it's going to expire?
Um, they're good for five years, and the expiration is September thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, so I've talked to...
Would you submit the same plan? Basically the same plan?
They, they don't like that so much.
Well, I mean, if your plan hasn't changed, then what?
No, well, you have to, you have to look at all the open space that you bought, you know, you have to go through a big public...
No, I understand that.
You have to go, people's ideas are assumed to have changed.
Essentially, this side, this side of the three A, right, is going to be unchanged.
Well, the problem is they make you do a new survey.
Okay.
So, anyway, I'm not going to be spending money out of the planning budget for that, it should come from CPA, so I've talked to Lisa about that, and I'm...
Yeah, I don't think it's a fundable thing.
Oh, other towns have done it.
Yeah.
So, that's, you know, it's nothing that we couldn't do if we, if we wanted to, I mean, I, switching over to the town planner report just for a minute, there have been some big problems with the scenic road sign application. I heard back from, from Lisa Fenton, who, you know, who we all know, Chair, she thinks that it's not going to be fundable through the CPA, because it's not clear that it's, you know, I, I think there needs to be some more information about what scenic roads are, She thinks that it's not gonna be fundable through the CPA, because it's not clear that it's, you know, I, I think there needs to be some more information about what scenic roads are, what they do, how they protect historic sites, so I'm gonna be working on that.
Yeah, we had a big discussion on that at our last CPC meeting.
Okay.
They didn't understand what the designation of the scenic road map.
Yeah, well, it sounds like, yeah, that's still up in the air somehow.
So once I explained it to them, then they understood the, the significance of it.
Oh, good, great, okay.
So I don't know, when you, when did you talk to her?
Um, I got a long email from her. Actually, it might have been before the meeting. You met on, on Tuesday?
We met, when, when did I stop at the site?
I think it was gonna be Tuesday night?
It was Tuesday, right.
Yeah, okay, maybe the email was before then. Good, okay, I'll follow the chain.
Because Tuesday explained, you know, exactly what it was, what it means and the designation to be a scenic road.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
You may wanna just ask her if that...
Answered, yeah, whatever she had.
She needed more information, then she could bring it up and I'll, I'll talk to her at the CPC meeting.
Okay, okay, good.
But Frank Snow chipped in and, and the others chipped in, so it was more than her just, her understanding. So everybody down knows something.
Good, that's great. Okay, so, you know, I don't have hard and fast numbers for you for my budget. Because I had to get the Green Communities Annual Report in, you know, we had a lot of activity with the planning board. So, I'm, I'm feeling a little remiss about that, and I will definitely get something out to you before I submit it. But I don't think there're gonna be any surprises in there. And I'm also trying to work with the EDC on their budget. I attended their meeting. We talked about some ideas that they're trying to follow up on. They're thinking about a staff person. They've got all kinds of ideas that are good ideas. I don't know if they're gonna be fundable or not, but, you know, we'll see, so.
On, on the master plan, I wanted to get back to that. I don't know if you saw in the paper that Marshfield was updating their master plan and they were doing like community sessions, almost like the REDC. They were doing a survey and all these other things, which I thought was, oh, that's kind of a nice idea, to get the input from the residents of what they felt should be updated to the master plan. So, I don't know if that's something that we would wanna do or maybe make it be not two thousand thirteen, but two thousand fourteen or something. But at some point, I think it was last done in two thousand four, right?
Yeah, two thousand four was the end. It actually started in two thousand. It was like a process that took several years. So, that's why, you know, I, I mentioned it, and also I, I thought maybe some of you had seen the Marshfield article. They went to town meeting with an article for money for the master plan, and I think they went for about twenty-five thousand. So it's not something that's, you know, cheap, but since we're already doing the open space plan, we're already doing, also the housing plan has to be updated, and that's like a standalone piece. We may be able to do it for, you know, eighty, you know, whatever, something less than a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, it may not be the best time with all the others, the gate study and everything going on.
It seems like we have a lot going on already for next year. I mean, the CPC participating in that alone's gonna take some time. To put that together and...
Yep.
So I think maybe we'll, I mean, it makes sense to me to kinda bite it off in chunks. You know, if we get through the CPC, we'll have historic, affordable and open space info that we can feed into the master plan, probably without going through a budget. We can buy doing ourselves, and then maybe we just bite off a piece at a time.
I think it's pretty ambitious.
That's difficult.
Maybe.
I don't know, I think we could, maybe we started the process when Nico is here, we're gonna do it all ourselves, so I think, you know, picking three sections. I mean, I think the CPC, what it comes up with basically is a master plan for those three sections.
Yeah, well, then also, there is a whole...
We can import those into the master plan.
Housing plan has to be done, too.
But I do like the, the Marshfield approach where it wasn't just like a board like this updating the master plan. They were like getting the feedback.
Oh, I fully agree with that, yeah. I think that's how it's done initially here.
The demographics have changed over the last ten years and people might have a different idea of what they want.
No, I agree. I'm just saying, I think for next year, it's hard for me to imagine we're gonna start that, kick off that process. And that's like a couple year-long process and some budget. I feel like it's realistic to look at the open space recreation historic, because we're doing that anyway with CPC. And that's three important sections of the master plan. Everything else we have going on.
Yeah, 'cause you're gonna have the master facilities plan thing going on at the same time.
Right, yeah, right, there's been a lot.
We're gonna wanna feed all of that.
You can only go to the people so many times, probably to...
Get input, too, you know.
And it makes sense to have those studies kinda done and in hand to inform the master plan, too.
Yeah.
Versus trying to do it at the same time.
Right.
Especially since other people will pay for it.
Even from the EDC, you know, input into the master plan potentially. Like if they get some money for, that they're talking about.
Oh, the market study that they wanna do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, and they just did a, a very comprehensive survey, too, so.
Oh, by the way, maybe this isn't the right time, but the study that was done on the Cohasset, remember that we, we were a part of that? Which is the planning study for the three A? Like, I actually went to the state website and tried to read that. Have you guys ever been? Like, it's impossible, I should say impossible. It's very difficult to fight. But what I gleaned from that was that it was sort of at the bottom of the list. It didn't really get funded. It was like recommended but not funded. Was that your?
I think it was not funded for the first year, but it was gonna be for the next year.
Oh, so that was, it was very confusing.
But it was, it was a little bit hard. And did it say when they made that decision? 'Cause I think just up until recently, they were still hoping that it would, you know, it would get some funding.
Okay, this was a, like a big, huge document of all of the stuff that had been decided, or like there were some things that had been funded. It was like the MAPC, was it MAPC, Master?
Unified, the UPWP or something.
Yeah, 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 something like that.
Unified Public Works Plan, or, yeah.
Anyway, I didn't wanna derail this, but that's also ongoing as well, potentially, so there might be some other things that feed in, so.
Yeah. I got some material from the, the contact in Cohasset, who's a Cohasset Planning Board member, who's, who's also an architect, Clark Brewer. And I can send that around to everybody. I was meaning to do that, yeah, so.
Well, and I'll, I'll send the documents I looked at. Maybe someone like Eric or Dan can figure it out. He has lots of lawyer language.
Give us a five-page synopsis.
Thank you.
So thanks for your town planner report and?
Yep, and the budget.
Most of the budget.
So, yeah, so I, I, I guess I'll just present the budget without like a formal vote, because you don't have, you know, I don't have exact numbers for you, but...
It's gonna be appreciably, with the exception...
It's gonna be, ninety percent of it is, is personnel cost. And the rest of it is, is not gonna be, you know, very substantial, so.
Okay. Liaison reports. Anybody else besides me go to meetings?
Sorry.
I'm on, what they did with CPC is they broke us up and do liaisons that, for each of the individual requests that have come in. So I sat down and I met with Historical. They've got four, I think, four applications that are in. So I sat down and talked with them, so to make sure that the application was complete and clearly fit within the criteria of, of potential CPC funding. So we met, I met with Dave Wall and, on that, so we could, those, those are gonna be voted on either in mid, in December or the tenth, I think it's the tenth, eighth to tenth or January on it, so they'll do that. I then met with Al Banghart and talked to him about the multi-use path, AKA sidewalk. And then I met with Recreation and talked with them about all of their field applications. And what we were concerned about was breaking it down, not, I, I didn't read all and the, I haven't seen the videotape of the, the meeting that I missed, but I went through the, the minutes. And I think Dan's point was, was, you know, let's, with everything else that's coming up in the world, let's take a look at, at what we're spending to make sure that we don't spend all of our money on that. And that's the same thinking that CPC went through on, uh, last week, was to come back up, is, is to come back up and look at the, the things, things that are, that are, that branch over multiple fiscal years. 'Cause you can't physically do it all, nor do you wanna fund it all in one year. Uh, so we've, we've looked at that, so we've asked Recreation to break down, prioritize what their, uh, say their top three choices are. And then come back up and, and look at the money and see whether it could physically be done in fiscal thirteen or fourteen. So we did that. The same thing with what would be the, the ramifications if we deferred any of the historic. And then getting a better understanding of phase one, phase two for the multi-use trail on the countryway. So all of those, all of the liaisons have done that, so some of them are looking at applications that we've had in terms of signage. I think Lisa's doing the signage on it. So, but we, we did have a, a pretty, pretty spirited discussion in terms of making sure that we had an adequate amount of money in, 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 in the kitty. To the extent that a large purchase came, came up, whether it be the possibly, you know, maybe the potential of buying the land up at St. Francis, Goldston, or, you know, something of that nature. So, and that, so we looked into that. And I'll, I'll talk with Lisa and see if we can get her to come in on her meeting in January. And just kinda just talk through the process on it, because, just because it's there and we have the money, doesn't mean we're gonna fund it. And that. And we also spent a fair amount of time talking about what we would do for affordable housing. As, as board members, we're, we're a little concerned over what's been done so far, given the capability that, that either the Housing Trust has the money that they've been afforded, or additional money that we have. And we talked about the possibility of, of hiring a coordinator for, to kinda come back up and, and work with the affordable housing. Which could be done out of, I think, our admin, not, it can't be done out of our administrative costs, but it would be a separate article. So we'd kinda coordinate all the activities to make sure that things are being done.
This is just to do with housing or to do all the CPC, just housing?
Yeah. But as I say, it's, you know, it's thirty thousand feet. We need to figure out how, make sure that we, A, that we can fund it, and B is that that person has a defined role. And basically moves the affordable housing along rather than just sitting there and putting it in this big abyss that it manages to sit in.
There's a number of towns that have done that, which I'm sure you guys know.
Anyway, that's what I've been doing in my spirit, though.
To follow up, I don't think you're gonna be able to watch a video of the last present, the last planning board meeting, 'cause we were at the, the WPA building. I think they taped it, right? There was nothing there.
No, there was nobody.
So you're not gonna see that.
Oh.
And the second thing, I think we tried, the, the thought was about the CPC funds for the sidewalk, as if they could tie it into historic resources, maybe, and make it a heritage trail or something. That that would be more supportive than just a multi-use path.
I mean, my take on it is, it's, it's a recreation activity and it's gotta compete with the ball fields. And one of the criteria I'm gonna be looking at is, what's the level of participation? I mean, how, how many, how many people do I reach?
Exactly, yeah. What's the priority and what's the best use of the funded funds?
So.
And it's not necessarily a liaison report, I, but I, I think I sent the, the planning board, all the members here. The, there was a transportation forum that was Wednesday morning in Braintree. Anne Burbine, who's the, um, on the, the board from Situate, was attending that. So I haven't gotten back. She's supposed to give me all the information that if they had any PowerPoint or any presentations that she would share with me. There was like also a mass dot listening session, which I couldn't attend, but I, I think I, I forwarded you guys like what I did go to the website and write on behalf of the Board of Situate, like what we were looking for, so.
Yeah, that was good.
Just to have some feedback there. And also the, was it the, was it, was it the, how, the Committee on Aging? What was the one that, that talked about the GATRA bus? We also made sure that Anne, yeah, Council on Aging. That they were concerned about, you know, the transportation, the, the bus service and so forth, so that was more, more funding for that.
Where do we stand on the bus service?
They completed their survey. The survey showed support for the route that was proposed, which is a loop down First Parish to the harbor and then coming back up three A. You know, starting with the town hall, going down First Parish to the, the harbor, stopping at all the senior-related locations on the route. Like Central Park, Wheeler Park, the Senior Center, and Gate School, the library and so on, going down the harbor, picking all those people up. And then going back by the MBTA station, by the Driftway, and then coming out to the Rotary and then coming up three A. And people pretty much like that route.
How's this gonna be funded?
It's being funded through, uh, there's some initial money that comes off the cherry sheet, which is, you know, what, there was some kind of agreement for. And I think the rest of the money was, I think town meeting may have voted some, town meeting voted that, that Situate would join GATRA. And then GATRA's way of funding it was, I think, through some money coming off the cherry sheet, but it's not, uh...
It's gotta be town-funded in some manner, I'm sure. The cherry sheet can't provide for much of that, I wouldn't think.
Well, that's money that I think the town would have gotten from, you know, from state aid and it's...
So it's funded, so it's funded by the town.
Yeah, they took it off the top.
So it's funded by the town, yeah, that's, yeah.
And to keep it going beyond a couple of years, we're probably gonna have to find some other funding. And that's why he's, you know, pushing, looking for resources of funds.
Yeah, I mean, it, it sounds like a, a good idea, assuming it's free, but based on the funding, I, you know, I have some real concerns about that.
Yeah.
The viability of something like that for a town of this size.
Yeah, well, I think the Selectmen are the ones, you know, to talk to, because I really don't have much to do with it, although I can pass that along, you know.
Yeah, well, it'll come up at town meeting at some point when the money runs out. The money's already run out, so it'll come up again, so. I was just curious if there's some other funding source they didn't know about, but, yeah, it's the town-funded, yeah.
So let me answer this question. Do we have anything that we wanna talk about?
There were just a couple things. We did the motions so that you wouldn't have to talk about anything else after.
Well, that's what I'm trying to make sure that we've got it all covered.
Okay, well, there's just two things. On that, going back to the bylaws for, for annual town meeting, on the stormwater. Karen is making copies of the changes to the regulations, which are the, that are being proposed, which are the things that just the planning board can vote on. So this would kind of support those changes to the bylaw that we were talking about before. So I guess what I wanna know is, you know, since we're gonna get all this material out and, and so on, can we, you know, I have to send a memo to Tricia by Friday about the, you know, the bylaw changes that you all want, so can I put on like a tentative one for that?
For the stormwater?
For the stormwater?
Yeah, sure. I think you just put it on, yeah.
Okay, if you're ready to put on, that's great.
We've talked about it, so.
The only thing I wanted to do was add an or here, just to make sure that, you know, there wasn't some ambiguity about this A1. After, second line, after fifteen thousand square feet of land. Or any development of an undeveloped parcel.
Yeah, I think, oh, yeah. Yeah, I just...
Okay, yeah, we can put a bunch of ors in there.
Is, is? Uh, A1.
Is land disturbance defined somewhere in here in a separate section?
Yes, yep, there's some definitions. They're in the, in the regulations, so these two things go together.
So...
I, I wonder if, I wonder if we should add to it solely land disturbance, you know, like, um...
Well, I'm asking if that includes...
Removal vegetation or something, you know, clear cutting, like, is it?
That's all defined in, in these, so I think what would make sense to do is for me to pass these out now and then everybody really look at them. And then we come back and talk about them.
Okay, but, but to your question, we could tentatively put in, do we wanna have that for an or?
Okay, great. And then my next question was gonna be, do you wanna tentatively put something in there for the accessory dwellings?
I do.
Yeah, I was just gonna make that exact second, um, suggestion.
I think we need to be a little careful about that, though. You know, you're talking about resisting somehow the include, the insertion of accessory dwellings into dense neighborhoods. But then think about places like the harbor, you know, or, or Green Bush, or any of the villages.
Or my house.
Well, I think, I think you may have, it may have unintended consequences.
I'm not thinking of eliminating it. I'm thinking of that, you know, I think it's a different situation when you're dealing with five thousand square foot lots than forty thousand square foot lots.
Why?
Well, can I say something here? Again, I'm not...
Because the density, it creates...
If it meets setbacks, if it meets lot coverage.
Yeah, I mean, you can build a house like that.
Well, well, for example, in, in Sand Hills neighborhood, the, I mean, Situate has decided that we're no longer gonna have five thousand square foot lots, because that was too dense. This allows you to have two dwelling units on a five thousand square foot lot. I, I don't, I'm not in favor of that. I, I think that if you're...
Some of the things that we've permitted, for instance, in, on Lighthouse Point are more egregious than that.
And I'm not in favor of those either.
Well, neither am I.
So maybe we should look at that as well. I'm just saying, I, I mean, I, I think, I think the idea of going in, you know, you look at the plan that showed what would happen if everyone built an accessory dwelling on that road. And you drive on those roads, and it's very dense already.
I just think it's a, it's a, it's a view that may address one situation when others need to be addressed as simultaneously.
We need to be careful.
Yeah, it's sort of, it's sort of discriminates against those who have smaller lots, who want or need an accessory dwelling for an in-law or something like that, so.
I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but I can't jump, we can't jump at it.
I agree. I, I don't know that I wanna eliminate it, but I think, you know, maybe it's a, maybe it's a compromise. You know, the, the one thing that bothers me is the forty percent versus seven hundred and fifty square feet rule in that neighborhood. You know, seven hundred and fifty is pretty small, but if you went to something more like, you know, five hundred square feet, you might have one-bedroom units versus two-bedroom units or something like that. Maybe there's a standard that needs to be different.
But suppose that house were two stories, and then it would be two thousand square feet, and then the forty percent would be okay.
I, I'm saying you change the standard completely. I'm saying that you, in certain neighborhoods, you only allow an accessory dwelling of a certain size, that's smaller than what we allow now.
It seems to me that, that the language actually gives you some flexibility there, because it's telling you that the maximum is seven hundred and fifty square feet, shall not exceed the maximum, right? So it seems to me you've got flexibility to say, it could be less than the maximum.
Well, it says...
That's what I'm saying.
It says seven hundred and fifty.
I, I think it says it here already.
Or...
No, I'm saying I think seven fifty in some circumstances is too big.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what we're saying, yeah.
We're saying the same thing. I'm, I'm just saying, I just...
He's saying up to.
I think you already have that ability in here, the way it's written.
But if I'm reading this correctly, if you have like a ten thousand square foot house, you could build an accessory dwelling that's forty percent of that.
Yeah, you could put a four thousand square foot, accessory dwelling.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the way I read this. I was thinking, I don't know if you could say forty percent, or forty percent, whichever is less. I don't know if that makes any sense.
Let me, I mean, I think the.
I think there's two pieces there. One is.
That would make some, that would make some sense in, in certain places.
The first, the first sentence sort of set, is setting the visual standard, so to speak, right? The second standard is saying, in no event shall it ever exceed this size, right? But it's, it's not saying that means it shall be that size. It's saying it should, should never exceed that size, right? It could be less, particularly if it, if it needs to be less than meet the first sentence, right?
Who decides what less means in a particular case?
Well, maybe that's the thing we ought to talk about, is, you know, maybe put some definition on clearly subordinate, or whatever that means.
Well, I, I think it could be us, if we, if the, if the ru, if the rule says that it's discretionary within the, the sense of the, of the planning board.
No, no. I, I disagree strongly. It's too much power. Any board at any given moment can decide what that, what that means, it's, you know.
I, I agree.
Well, that's the way it's written, though.
I know, and I don't like the way it's written.
That's what I'm saying, is define what you mean by clearly subordinate, you know.
Yeah, we've gotta, we've gotta have parameters that.
Yeah, see, I'm not, I'm not happy with the size standard. I mean, that's my main concern, and I, I just think there needs to be a different standard in, you know, smaller sized lots, so. I, I would be looking at modifying the forty percent or seven fifty to something probably less than that.
But that, well, okay. Two things are happening, though, in the one that we looked at tonight. One of them, the lot size, was not five thousand square feet. It's a double lot, it was ten thousand. The other thing is that the, the existing house was quite small. So now you're gonna penalize people who happen to have quite small existing houses in terms of their ability to create accessory dwellings. You can't do that.
Why not?
Because it's not fair.
Well, we didn't, we didn't.
It's not equitable.
Well, we didn't used to have an accessory dwelling bylaw at all. I mean, that's a relatively new thing, and it used to be restricted solely to affordable, to get affordable housing in town, so. I mean, I, I'm not gonna allow someone with a five thousand square foot to build a fifty unit condominium on it either. I mean, if it's gonna clutter the street with extra traffic and people, I mean, that's what zoning is for. You're, you're controlling the density of a neighborhood, so. I, I understand, I can sympathize with people, you know, they've got a small house and they may have a certain need for something like that, but that doesn't make me want them to densify the neighborhood, just allow them to do that just 'cause they own property. It doesn't make any sense to me. They can right now, they can.
What happens?
Well, they can do it without building an accessory dwelling.
Because they build the addition and then they come back and sit there and say, I want a portion of that that's affordable.
Well, that's what we have to address in the bylaw.
Well, I mean, if, if densifying the neighborhood in, in the physical sense of too much construction on a, on a given lot.
Well, that's setbacks.
It's a problem. Setbacks and lot coverage.
I'm not concerned about that, I'm concerned, I'm more concerned about traffic, because, and, and you, because you look at the plan they put out there and they went from, I don't have it right here, but they went, you know, they almost doubled the amount of people on the street. And when you go on those streets, it's dense already, you used to live over there, it's already very dense. And if you double the amount of people on there, that's not a great situation. I mean, that's, that's akin to allowing, you know, apartment complexes to go in that area and having that kind of density there, and I don't think, I don't think that's good planning for those neighborhoods, so.
Do we wanna maybe have, you know, a couple of people that are really interested in this, like, working on it?
I mean, we can, we can look at it, but I don't think between now and the timeframe that we've got, we've got our hands full, we're trying to do what we just agreed to do.
Yeah, and the.
Because they've all gotta be public hearings, so we've gotta go through a hearing process for each one of them.
I, I don't know, I, I don't think it's that.
The two of them are written.
I don't think it's that big of a change. I think we have to discuss it a lot more, but I think the ultimate change to the bylaw is gonna be something fairly simple in terms of setting a standard for the more dense neighborhoods than what applies to everything else.
I still think you're gonna run into trouble in, you know, around the harbor, around the village centers.
In what way? That people are gonna be opposed to it? I mean, certainly, a lot of people will be.
There may be cases where it's perfectly justified and in keeping with the neighborhood, even though the lots are quite small.
The accessory dwelling on top of the cable building might be an example. There, you got no parking at all.
On the corner of Jericho Road and Beaver Dam.
I, I personally think the risk of harm is much greater than the risk of having a couple special circumstances.
My, my gut feeling is that the forty percent is pretty, allows a pretty large unit, and I think it's, my gut feeling is that that may be a lot more liberal than other towns are allowing. So what I could do is find out how other towns are dealing with the area.
But it's not the forty percent's problem, it's the seven fifty alternative.
Well, yeah, I mean, it'd be really interesting to just turn it inside out.
Yeah, see, whichever's less, right.
Yeah.
If we looked at Garden Road, and we gave, you gave him forty percent of that.
That would allow all the.
Have the approved accessory dwellings.
Four hundred square feet in the case that we just looked at.
Yeah, it'd be like a little studio.
That's more what I'm talking about, something like that, where.
That's probably.
What's the threshold then?
Well, that's what we have to decide.
We have to figure it out.
But, but I just think the idea of treating a forty thousand square foot lot the same as a five thousand square foot lot doesn't make any sense to me. There should be something different.
Well, you've still got setbacks and coverage and this sort of thing that, you know, you've gotta adhere to.
You know, one thing, I, I don't know if it would be helpful or not, but the idea of, of allowing more input and maybe even a veto on the part of the neighbors.
You could never.
Absolutely not.
Probably rights issue there.
Civil war.
Could never do that. And I think too, it's the, I'm more concerned about the five thousand square foot lots, just because, you know, what someone did raise is that, you know, we decided not to have five thousand square foot lots anymore in Situate. But this allows you to, you know, practically have the same situation. So I think that needs to be addressed.
If we go back to the original bylaw and say you, you can have an accessory dwelling if you can prove need or cause, and these are the reasons that you would have it, you know, financial, relatives living there, whatever, that kind of thing, then, then, then we become an enforcement agency, and we can't do that.
I also don't think that was strictly affordable. It was always still, we always had, you had a regular, accessory dwelling and we had an affordable component.
Yeah, you started out with a regular, and then you afforded it later.
Then we came back and we, we handed the affordable to it.
Wasn't it attached versus detached or something like that?
No, that was the last change we did.
I think that was the change, yeah.
Happened, yeah.
Yeah, it had to be affordable before, if it was detached, is that right?
Yeah.
And we changed it, suddenly you could allow.
Taken out.
Yeah, taken out, so. But I, I think.
But I also don't think that when we, at least, I don't think I ever sat there and laid out what the ramifications could be on the street.
Yeah, that map they showed was very insightful, I mean, I, from a planning perspective, that's crazy.
It would take you multiple years to get there, because there's a limit to how many affordable units you can have in a year, but.
Yeah, but it's not about, it's not about physical structure, though. It's not about the physical structure.
Because you could build all of that.
You can build it all now, you don't need, yeah, I mean.
That's a setback issue, yeah, or FAR or whatever, but.
I think you're right.
It's number of people.
Number of people.
Cars, that kind of stuff.
If you wanna, in effect, sort of zone the Sand Hills neighborhood as sort of a, you know, multifamily type of situation.
I don't think it's the intent.
The, I mean, in my opinion, the proper correction would be to somehow relate it to the lot size. So if you're on a five thousand square foot lot, you can have a five hundred square foot apartment.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
If, on, on the lots that are undersized.
And you'd be dealing with total lot coverage.
With lot coverage, don't go with a dwelling, because, just like you said, Bill, what, what's happened in the past is people will go and build a big huge garage on their house with a big empty room upstairs, and then they'll come back in when they're all done and ask for an accessory dwelling permit, and they've already got the structure. So there's nothing that will, you can't, you can't say, you can't do an addition on your house and then come back and ask to get an accessory dwelling. So the, the real issue is on undersized lots, how big do you wanna have those apartments? That's what I've heard all night long, is because the lots are so small, how do you regulate that? You're still gonna add two bedrooms to your house and have more people in your house, so you're still gonna have the same density. That the plan that they showed you, you could probably build a lot bigger than that, because I heard one gentleman said that the house that the woman was proposing took up the whole site. Well, I heard it was an eight hundred square foot house and a seven hundred and fifty square foot apartment, that's fifteen hundred square feet. Didn't she have a ten thousand square foot lot?
Right, exactly.
That's like, that's like twelve or thirteen percent lot coverage, that's not the whole lot.
No, she's not like they got bigger than.
You hear a lot of things thrown out there, but, yeah, it should relate to the size of the park. And you gotta meet the setbacks anyways.
If you're concerned, though, is numbers of cars and number of people, you're gonna put the same number of cars and people in a four hundred square foot, maybe, as you would in a six hundred or a seven hundred square foot.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, doesn't solve the traffic problem.
I, I mean, the other way to address.
It solves the physical, the physical built problem.
Size, right.
But, you know, you don't, say I don't call it an accessory dwelling, I call it a family room, or a garage, or whatever. As I drive by, I'm seeing the same exact building that I would see otherwise.
Right, and, and I think you guys acted properly tonight, because what they changed in the plan to make it look like a single family, that's the whole purpose. That's why it was to keep the stairs around the back. If it was a, you know, a two, two floor structure, is to try to hide the entrance for the extra unit. I mean, the only thing that I saw was, if you could've got it to a single driveway and widened that single driveway rather than had two separate driveways, it would've maybe looked a little bit more like it was just a single family hall.
The problem was that there's not enough, I thought about that, there's not enough room on the side.
Well, the, I was thinking about too, I mean, if, when I looked at that plan and said if it was fully built out like that, that's a lot of rental units, a lot of traffic on that street. Another way to handle it would be to say, you know, short of saying you have to prove financial hardship, you could restrict it to, it's gotta be family members in both units.
Yeah, I was thinking that, too.
They don't tend to accept those anymore.
Yeah.
The HES office kicks those out now.
Oh, really? Okay, well, that could be. But, but I mean.
And then you're, then you're into the enforcement business.
I mean, it sounds like we can probably solve the density on the lot issue, but I'm still concerned about the number of people on a street. Number of total cars coming and going. I mean, I drove on Garden Road before I came home tonight, and, you know, it's relatively dense already, and, you know.
It's quite a callous thing to say, but if it becomes a very unacceptable situation to someone living there, you can move.
Well, exactly, and.
I mean, I moved from mine it for similar reasons, very honestly.
Yeah, and, and you wanna be sympathetic to say, you know, everybody should have an opportunity if they have a true hardship, but if we can't regulate the hardship or investigate if there's a hardship there, we're leaving it open to people that just wanna densify the street with rental units, and that's not what I wanna see.
That was never the intention, for sure.
But the, the bylaw actually, you know, gives a lot of different opportunities to do that. So you'd have to change the bylaw significantly here in order to get back to that, you know.
But even if we left it exactly the same, which I don't propose, I feel like at some point we should come back and maybe change the words to clear, that clearly subordinate, and have a definition or something, like clearly subordinate means such and such, whatever that is.
No more than fifty percent, or something, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I think that was what the lawyer, what he was using as the sort of crowbar, if you will, to kinda like get in there.
I like turning it around to make it, you know, whichever is less, as opposed to whichever is greater.
That, that would work. I mean, it would make the accessory pretty small in some of those houses, but if someone truly had sort of like a family situation, why would they need seven fifty square feet? They could get by with a studio apartment and you could share the.
Their elderly mother could be a, yeah.
And they could share the use of the main house.
If it's an accessory.
Let's do the additions first, and then we'll come back.
I'm not sure.
But if, if I'm making an accessory dwelling out of it, I've gotta provide kitchen facilities, I gotta find bath facilities, and I gotta provide bedroom facilities. To do that with three hundred and twenty square feet is.
It's tough, yeah.
That's not gonna work, but it, it would work with seven hundred and fifty square feet, fine.
In the studio.
Yep.
So it, it may vary, but we, we can't get there from here very well.
Well, I think we have to look at the policy. I mean, is it a good policy to sort of town-wide allow accessory dwellings with kind of the white, with the constraints we have, that we can't monitor, you know, or we can't restrict it from becoming just general rental housing? Is that something we want in these neighborhoods that are already dense?
Could you, would it affect things if you just said, if the primary unit is under one thousand square feet, you're not allowed to have an accessory? I mean, would that be something that you could do?
That's more the direction I'm going towards, but I think that, that begs the argument, you know, is that, than penalizing people that are on smaller lots.
I'm gonna build my five hundred foot house, and then I can have my accessory dwelling.
Right, exactly.
People have the right to, to increase the size of their dwelling and then ask for a permit next month.
No, but we just prohibit them, though, on those lots. We just say, we don't care how big your house is, you can't have an accessory dwelling if you're on a five thousand square foot lot.
But if you're not changing the footprint, why would you?
I, I, I think that's another thing that they've been a little picky about, is they don't like you to, within one zoning district, say, you know, you can do it on some properties, but not, I mean.
Why not? All the rest of the zoning does that.
Sorry?
In the same district, they have to be treated the same.
Yeah, in the same district, they do.
No size difference, you can restrict.
Of course you can.
The size according to the lot.
Yeah, of course you can.
For lot coverage.
Yeah, of course you can.
Or, or can you?
I don't know whether they would or not, but another thing you could do is just put in there that, you know, in no case shall the accessory dwelling be more than fifty percent of the size of the primary dwelling. I mean, you could put something like that in there.
No, but what is?
For just this type of situation, so that you, when you have a small main house, you can't have such a large accessory dwelling.
As Steve says, then you.
They would build a giant main house.
Add your, add to your primary dwelling and then you come back and get an accessory dwelling.
But wouldn't they still have to come back?
But that's not gonna happen so often.
We'd still have to come back before the board, and we'd still have to approve it.
They don't have to, they don't have to approve the, the initial addition. They just have to go pull a building permit.
Yeah, now they could put a thousand foot addition on top of that.
No, of course, I agree, but for them to come back to make it an accessory, we would have to approve it.
No, no, you, you're misunderstanding what I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take my thousand square foot house.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go to Neil and get a building permit to put a thousand square foot addition on it.
Okay.
I comply with all zoning, I don't have to come before us at all.
I agree.
No, next year I come before us, I've got a two thousand square foot house, and I ask for an accessory dwelling.
That's how you do it. You just make the primary residence bigger, that's how you get around it.
But I, I think if someone does that, they're gonna wind up with a pretty good-looking house to start with. And then if they add on, the, the whole, the, the impression of the whole thing is gonna be a little more.
I, I agree, but you, the one that we just looked at is gonna be a much better-looking house than it is today, when they're finished with the project that, that they're proposing.
I agree.
So, you know.
I, I think it's more a question of weighing the benefit of allowing accessory in the neighborhoods that are already dense versus the, the harm of potentially having it fully built out with two units on each property.
Steve brought up an interesting situation, or an interesting point, that if you've got a pre-existing non-conforming use, which every building on a five thousand square foot lot is.
Yep, all the Sand Hills.
Then you could, then you could say you can't have an accessory dwelling if you've got a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Or it can only be four hundred square feet.
Or what, or, or whatever, but that can, that can be the, the, that, that can be the, the sort of benchmark that, that you use.
Yeah.
Although this one, well, this one was non-conforming in some minor ways, but it certainly had a lot of.
Which is as to lot area.
Yeah, no, yeah, it was as to lot area, right. That would keep five thousand, that would take five thousand square foot lots off the table.
Yeah, I, I, that's.
Or regulate them differently.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I, I just, yeah, I think the bottom line, they should be treated differently, 'cause, you know, you look at the possibility of what could happen, like on that one street that we showed it, and I, I don't think anybody would plan on that intentionally. that they showed it, and I don't think anybody would plan on that intentionally.
Right.
That happened and say, this is what we should see happen there. I don't think the benefit of getting accessories outweighs the harm that would be to that neighborhood by having that happen with that kind of density, so.
But I think the situation now is.
Again, if you have people, it wouldn't be the physical structure.
Do we try to do something by spring town meeting?
I think we should. I think, I feel obligated to after what we just went through. I mean, I think it's, I think we at least need to go through the process and see if we can come up with it. If we reserve a spot on the warrant, we can have meetings about it. If we solve it in time for spring, great. If we don't, we can continue it to the fall.
But we can't continue it to the fall, because remember we had the whole thing with the village, all the zoning and the village overlay and all the bylaws?
That's, that's not true at all.
That's, that was their position.
Yeah, I know, but that doesn't hold water, because they also put on the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar study at the fall meeting, which was a huge substantive change. So our little change in the zoning bylaw paled in comparison to that. So that is an unwritten policy that's not been enforced by the town ever, so that doesn't hold water, that argument.
It was voted down, I think.
Yeah.
Just one quick, quick thought. Dan, would you be willing to help draft some language?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, but I feel obligated after what we just went through. I don't think we can all say that we don't like the result of that, and it meets the bylaw, and we don't like the bylaw, then just ignore it.
I think it would be helpful, though, if you could look at some other surrounding towns and see how they've dealt with that. I mean, I'd be interested to know.
Yeah.
I mean, do most zoning bylaws in towns like this have an accessory dwelling provision?
A lot of them do, but not all.
A lot of them are affordable only that I've seen.
Yeah.
And a lot of them have them have smaller limits. I mean, I've seen a lot with like thirty, thirty-five percent and six hundred square feet. I mean, I, yeah.
I mean, we could propose that, too. I'm also thinking that something could be an intermediate regulation where if a lot is ten thousand square feet, or I guess that's the smallest lot that's allowed in the town as a new lot. So below that, we'd be talking about a pre-existing non-conforming. Between ten and twenty, we'd be talking about, maybe there's a regulation that the accessory has got to be attached to the main house.
Yeah.
So that it doesn't wander off and, you know, be a separate building, and it's only above twenty thousand square feet, you can actually have a separate building.
Yeah, and maybe, I mean, maybe there's.
Does that leave out things like people who have, you know, apartments over garage?
Yeah, that's what I was.
If the garage is not attached.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the real issue, too, is that percentage, you know, when you say the greater of this square feet or the percentage, it allows for abuse of the percentage. So I think, I like the idea of the lesser of percentage of some square footage, so people don't go and build a giant house and then rely on the percentage to get what they couldn't get on the square footage.
Right, and with seven hundred and fifty or something like that as the very top. So even if you have a four thousand square foot house, you can still only build seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah, if someone builds a ten thousand square foot house, should they have, what would that be, a four thousand square foot accessory dwelling? That's crazy.
Right.
I mean, that's not the point of that bylaw, so I think.
Ducksbury just approved one of those.
What's that?
Ducksbury just approved one of those, I think, with a, either a three or four thousand square foot accessory.
So I think, I think the way to go is have maybe different standards, like if you're legal non-conforming, maybe you don't get it. If you're conforming ten thousand, here's the standard. You've got a different standard on the bigger lots with the lesser of percentage or square footage and decide what's reasonable. But to me, an accessory dwelling, regardless of the size of the house, if it gets much over, I don't know, fifteen hundred square feet, it's, I mean, that's, that's a second house on the lot. That's not accessory.
Fifty percent larger than the house she just talked about.
Yeah.
I don't know if we've ever really seen those, though, and the largest one is, but most of them are pretty small.
Yeah.
I mean, of all the accessory dwellings.
You could keep seven fifty as the top end.
I'd be fine with that.
Of all accessory dwellings that we've done, and we've done a fair number of, this is the only one that's been a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, this has been the biggest problem, yeah.
And I think if they come in with what we ultimately approved first, instead of coming in with multiple houses the first time, then I think it would have gotten nowhere near the.
Well, maybe what I'll do is I'll get some information, send it out to everybody, and then, you know, several people want to throw ideas back, that would be great, and I can kind of.
I'm not opposed to doing that. I just don't think that we physically got enough horsepower to do that before. You can tell me.
Oh, I do. I just wrote it out right now. I've got, I mean, I've got it all figured out based on what everybody said, and it's easy fix, so.
So email it out, email it out to us tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I could. I mean, it's simply agreeing on what the number is that we plug in. That's all it comes down to. It's going to be the lesser of a percentage or a square footage for ten thousand square foot lots, twenty thousand, forty thousand, and it's just deciding on what that number is, which I think you can go through a hearing and decide. We already have the forty percent or seven fifty as the standard townwide, so.
The house that we had, what would you come up, what kind of a number would you have?
It'd probably be the lesser of forty percent or seven fifty is probably what it'd be, or.
Let's say it's forty percent.
And we decide if it's not allowed, or it may not be allowed.
Let's say it's an eight thousand.
That was a double lot, a ten thousand square foot lot.
It has to be related to the size of the lot. It can't be related to the size of the.
Well, that's where I'm headed, because you.
No, but I'm saying you have a different standard for each lot size, so like, yeah. So I've got, so I've got a standard for five, for five thousand square foot lots, I'm not sure we would allow it at all. That's what the decision might be, that you don't allow it at all on legal non-conforming lots. Ten thousand, you'd say it'd be the lesser of forty percent or seven fifty or whatever we decide.
But the forty percent has to relate to the lot, not the size of the house that's there. So it would be more like ten percent of the lot area.
But it doesn't have to, because we're doing the lesser of the percentage or the square footage.
I'm going to build my house bigger and then I'm going to come and ask you for the permit.
I know, no, but you're misunderstanding. Right now it's the.
Seven fifty, you wouldn't get anything.
You'd only get, you can't get above the seven fifty.
You just grant it seven fifty, it didn't work.
We probably aren't going to get this all worked out tonight, and we still have executive session.
Have a go around. It's solvable, but I think you have to do it based on the square footage of the lot, not the dwelling that's on the lot.
Sounds like an F A R limitation.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
So for ten thousand square feet, it might be five hundred.
So it's like an F A R, so you can have a total of X amount of square footage on this lot with accessory dwelling, period.
Your house exceeded that already, then you couldn't get accessory dwelling?
Yeah, that would make sense.
Five hundred of the lot?
Yeah, just.
No, you can't do that.
But in this particular case, as, using this as an example, I think they would have complied, right? Because as you said, just quick, some quick numbers, they only used like thirteen percent of the lot. So we have to be careful, is all I'm saying, is that.
Well, you know, we're back to the issue, and that is if they'd come in with what we ended up with at the very beginning, we probably wouldn't have been here.
Yeah, well, I think it's solvable. We can spend some time on it, but I don't, I don't think it's technically that difficult, and I'm sure it's been addressed in other